The Board of Supervisors to order. Ms. Warren, may I have a roll call, please?
Supervisor Giomi.
Here.
Supervisor White.
Here.
Supervisor Horton.
Here.
Supervisor Shutey.
Here.
Mayor Bagwell.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We're going to move to Agenda Item 3, which is our invocation. And today we have with us, she's ready, prepared, right? Pastor Peggy Locke, who's our Assistant Minister at the Reno Hillside Forest Square Church. And she is a, I like that, a specialized chaplain.
That's right. Good morning.
Good morning.
The Bible says in Psalm 5:3, "In the morning, Lord, you hear my voice; in the morning I lay my requests before you and wait expectantly. Father, we praise your name and give you thanks for your steadfast love and faithfulness. We thank you as we pray, you hear our voice. We ask for your strength and wisdom, as we work together serving the people of Carson City and for the good of our community. May we honor you with our actions and the words of our mouth. Bless our families, our coworkers, and all those in attendance today. We pray for your continued protection and grace for those who serve in harm's way. We pray for our mayor, our Board of Supervisors, our sheriff, and fire departments, that you will give them what they need to do their jobs well. The Lord bless you and keep you; the Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you; and the Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. In Jesus' name, amen."
Thank you so much for those kind words. Ms. Freeman, would you do us the honor of leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're on opening public comment. I didn't see any signups, but does anyone have opening public comment? Mr. French?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. Today I am asking that you put Item 9B into a discussion. I have it found on the, boy, the head just went out. All the study didn't help. On the consent agenda, removed from that, at least for the purposes of clarification, on why the extension was needed and how we're handling it as a 10% increase, and the other concerns that I have about an individual like Loomis Company, or, I'm sorry, a company like Loomis is no beginner at making bids. They should have known in advance the nature of the land that they were going to be working on, and then relay that to their contractors, and their bid then should have related and reflected the extreme amount of overview that being on a conservation easement piece of property should be and would be necessary. And so the considerations that I've been able to dig out from the information available is that due to those extra oversights and the extra time that it took to be careful and not do peripheral damage to the very sensitive habitat, is there reason for having to have, if there's a contractual delay, or equipment delay, or a weather delay, I could understand it being extended, and I can understand and appreciate the care that the crews had taken. I had the good fortune of meeting Alex, he's a crew, or a supervisor for one of the contractors, and I didn't solicit his connection or approaching me. But when he did, I was surprised, well, I wasn't surprised, I was appreciative of his consideration of doing his job in a conservation easement area, and how conscientious those crews were as I went out and watched. They backed up, they didn't go straight through other virgin sage, and didn't destroy anything more than was absolutely necessary. I do not like the trail. I think it's definitely, if it were one of the findings on a property deal, it would not be considered to fit the nature of the area it's in. However, I understand that it was probably put in more for the fact of erosion control than anything else. The houses below weren't required to consider that when they were built, and now we found a way to wiggle it into a nice trail for connectivity and access. So I would like it to go to consideration and some discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other public comment? Okay, we're going to move on then to Agenda Item 6, which is approval of our minutes of February 6, 2025. Do I have any changes or anything necessary? Supervisor Giomi, a motion, please.
I move to approve Carson City Board of Supervisors meeting minutes of February 6, 2025, as presented.
I have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, it was unanimous. Okay, we're now ready for the consent agenda. Did any member, no one asked? Everybody good? Are you, Supervisor Giomi, a motion, please?
Move to approve the consent agenda consisting of Items 7A, 8A, 8B, 8C, 8D, 9A with Resolution Number 2025-R-4, and all of those are as presented.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, it was unanimous. Okay, we are now on Agenda Item 11A, discussion and possible action regarding the courtroom. Make sure, boy, we're going way quick. We're on 11A. Come on up, Cameron, and we'll go over any potential legislative discussion.
All right. Good morning, Supervisors. Mayor Bagwell, for the record, I'm Cameron Gresh, Carson City Government Affairs Liaison. There are 89 days left in the 83rd session of the Nevada Legislature.
Yeah, but who's counting? Sorry.
So, yeah, we've got three months left. We're off to, I think, a busier start than everyone expected. That being said, I would like to, for today's discussion, bring before you eight bills that have been identified as having a fiscal impact, or, excuse me, a potential fiscal impact on Carson City. Just as a reminder, the list of legislation that we are tracking, which is approximately 320 out of 733 bills as of last night, this list is available at Carson dot, excuse me, Carson.org/legislature. Now, that being said, just a quick explanation on fiscal notes. For anyone who isn't aware, fiscal notes are submitted by the Legislature and attached to any bills that could have a fiscal impact on local or state entities, reducing revenues, adding, you know, unfunded mandates, things like this. Carson City, along with every other public entity in the state, responds to these requests at the behest of the Legislature. Fiscal notes are publicly available on Nellis, on the bill's page, so the same place you go to read a bill's text is the same place you would go to see Carson City's fiscal notes and any others submitted for that bill. That being said, let's go ahead and get into it in numerical order here. I will note that all the text of these bills that I'm about to go over was submitted as late material, and paper copies are available on the table behind me for anyone who might wish to have them. So I'm going to go ahead and just read the bill number, and then a brief explanation of where it's at in the legislative process, if there is anything to go over there. I will say a lot of these are new, as in, we got them in the last two days new, so we are still analyzing some of these, but I'll try to, where I can, put in any legislative insight about imminent hearings or anything like that. So, beginning with AB 66, which is probably going to be the most familiar piece of legislation to anyone here, as we've been aware of it since before session. Section 2 of this bill increases the number of district judges in the first judicial district, which includes Carson City and Story County, from two district judges to three. Section 10 sets out the timeframe for the elections and the additional judges who would be taking office if this bill passed in January 4, 2027. Carson City has estimated the fiscal impact of this legislation to be $414,000 in salaries and remodeling costs in fiscal year 2026. AB 218 requires the court administrator and, oh, sorry, did we want?
Why don't we, I'd like to do action or discussion at each item.
Okay.
So do we have discussion on AB 66? Pro, con, neutral?
I just have a question. Given what we learned at the retreat or work session, whatever we had a couple of Fridays ago, or however long ago that was, that number, especially when you're considering remodeling costs, seems way, way, way low. I don't know how, I don't know how we accommodate an additional district court with staff for $400,000 when our justice court is costing us millions. So I think we have to relook at that. I think the best way to respond to that is by being honest about the cost. We don't have space for another district court. I mean, especially if we have to add a justice court in the next year or two. So that's, that's my thought. I'd also like to hear what, on any of these bills, I think it would be very helpful for us to have the individual experts on those bills from staff here to give us their thoughts on it. I'd like to hear from Max, I'd like to hear from her as to whether or not the, on the record, whether the court needs another district court, in their opinion. And finally, maybe we should impose on our friends in Story County. Maybe they'd love to host a district court in Story County. Perhaps that's, perhaps that's a great solution. I tried that as well, but they just laughed at me.
We have great minds there. Put that person in Virginia City.
It does cover their county as well, and maybe, you know, maybe Lockwood would be a great place for a district court, or perhaps Trigg would be a great place for a district court. Anyway, I'll stop there.
I concur that we need to really look at this fiscal note and determine that we've covered all impacts pursuant to the bill, because it seemed, just seemed a bit low on that one.
Well, in paragraph 3, we do have an out.
If the judge is.
If Chief Justice notifies the LCB that it's not needed. But I think what Cameron said there was, remodeled, just for the courtroom, was $450,000. That didn't cover the cost, right, Cameron?
It was my interpretation from the fiscal note that 414 in salaries and remodeling costs does include that number, but I will, of course, confirm.
I'm not even sure 414 covers salaries. Did we really analyze that?
I'm trying to find my email from Max, but when she had sent over the information, I think they said that they would need four additional employees, and then the judges paid for by the state.
Yeah, but that includes bailiffs and clerks and.
Right.
Admin staff for the judge and all of that.
She was saying it'd be five for the justice court, because we'd have to pay for the judge, and then four additional for the district court.
Okay.
And I don't, she wasn't including in the number the, you know, the entire remodel cost. I think at that time, when they were doing the fiscal note, they didn't know if that was going forward, so.
So we'll look to ask for a revised fiscal note.
Okay.
And I don't know whether you split the remodel costs between both judges, you know, one for, I don't know how we, how we articulate that.
And we don't, we don't want to purposely overinflate fiscal notes. I mean, we have a lot of credibility when we are accurate with the depiction, but I don't feel like that's an accurate number of fair representation of the cost to our citizens for adding that, that judge.
Okay. Everybody good on moving on? I have nothing to add. Okay. Move on to the next one, please. Thank you.
All right, then. Moving on to AB 218, which require the court administrator in all courts in Nevada to establish a text messaging program that notifies criminal defendants, citation recipients, and juveniles about upcoming court proceedings, deadlines, and missed appearance, excuse me, missed appearances. It mandates law enforcement to collect phone numbers upon citation, arrest, or juvenile detention to facilitate these notifications, and it also allows individuals to opt in or out of the program. Additionally, the court administrator must convene a working group to assess best practices and submit an annual report on the program's effectiveness to the Legislature. Our fiscal note on this estimates a $150,000 system implementation cost in ongoing texting software maintenance costs of $20,000 annually.
Supervisor Shutey?
Yeah, I have a question regarding the opt-in and opt-out. That one kind of confuses me. Is it that the, the individual facing court has an option to opt in or out?
I believe it's, oh, yes, I'm on. I believe, based on my reading of the law, I can confirm this, but that it would be anyone who receives any kind of citation or any kind of interaction with the court would have this option, and that they would be able to opt out of it. Obviously, you're just opting out there of one form of communication. As to my understanding, all other forms, standard forms of communication, mail, things like that, that's a separate process.
Okay. Do you think that that's because of potential costs involved to the recipient of the text? I mean, it's just, otherwise, it's just an interesting idea. One would think that it would be nice to receive as many notices so they don't miss an important court case or, or meeting, or whatever it is, but, so, okay.
Anyone else have a, anyone else has a comment on this? I think I'm trying to decide, because when I look at the Legislative Digest, it says that existing law is there for civil infractions. So Sheriff, are we already doing this on tickets for civil infractions, or we don't have any text methodology? We don't have any text. Okay. But the court currently has a texting system?
I would have to double-check the civil side of that, Mayor.
Okay, because it says existing law.
Yeah, but it just says that the phone number has to be collected.
And an indication.
And an indication as to whether they agree to receive communications. Doesn't say you have to do it.
So, well, it says that a police officer has to collect the phone number.
Correct.
And the indication. And I'm just wondering, one, are you collecting it and having a little thing that says opt-in, opt-out, whatever? Don't know, sorry, Sheriff? Because it says he's supposed to. Then the court's the next problem, right?
My apologies, Sheriff. For the record, yeah, I'm sure that that's not a problem, collecting it. I haven't gotten a ticket lately, so I don't know that they've asked. That's, that's where I'm hesitating. I apologize.
You're being honest. I haven't seen a civil infraction lately. You mean they don't pull you over?
That would be part of the normal identifying and information collecting. It's not a challenge. And, of course, the DA's office does use a texting message already in place for us, so it would sound to me to be something similar and likely.
That's kind of what I was after, if we have any pieces of the puzzle that are already implemented. Right? And so it's really just adding a layer? Okay. And I'm with Supervisor Giomi. I'd like to know what the court's opinion and the fiscal note on this one.
So.
Yeah, they don't have to have a person that enters all, whatever, and make sure that the text message.
So, Cameron, do you have a sense of, is this a one-time opt-in, opt-out, repeat offenses in the future? Do you have to opt in again? How far are they taking this opt-in, opt-out option?
I am not sure of the implementation of the opt-in and opt-out as it exists in this legislation, but conversations on this bill are ongoing, and I can absolutely find out what the bill's sponsor and also the Judiciary Committee envisions when they implement an opt-in, opt-out. At this point, I'm not sure if it's something you would have to do each time you are arrested or cited by the police. I'm not sure what the capacity is to store this information, or what means they would have to do so, but I can check on that.
You know, on the surface, to me, it just, it seems like a silly thing to put in law.
Yeah.
It just really seems like a silly thing to put into codify in state law. It seems ridiculous. I, I mean, if you want to do it, great. If you want to offer it, it seems like a great idea, but I just don't understand why you would waste time.
And especially based on the details that you can see and hear, that's directing us to intervals of not less than seven days, three days, and one day, you know?
And then what happens?
If anything goes wrong, what does that mean?
Number is incorrect, and I think it's, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me.
You know, on the other hand, we're, I mean, how many of us leave anywhere without this? Anybody, seriously? I mean, anybody? So, I mean, but, but I don't understand why it has to be in law. Just, if you want to do it, do it.
And then the responsibility is placed on the courts versus.
The person.
The person.
Individual who has committed the crime, who ultimately has the responsibility to comply with the lawful orders.
Absolutely.
Should be their responsibility.
Except that most of these people wound up in the system are irresponsible.
I know. I know that, but, you know, do we, well.
I'm just concerned that, right?
Do you really need laws to make people responsible? And, of course, the answer to that is yes, because they won't in a lot of cases otherwise, so, I don't know.
I think, I think we'd like some more information on what the.
I would just say, leave it alone. It just seems like not worth wasting our time on, to me.
You mean that we oppose it?
I wouldn't even do anything with it. I'd just.
Just say nothing and hope it just dies its own?
Whatever. If it happens, it happens, but.
Well, I think there's some questions that have been posed today that should be answered, but perhaps no official.
Action yet.
Public statement.
Right, and perhaps hearing more of the why behind what brought this bill forward in the first place.
Sure.
Okay. Let's go to the next one, 247.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor. So AB 247 expands accessibility provisions for persons with disabilities by requiring public meetings to provide registered sign language interpreters and communication access real-time translation, or CART services. It mandates that all public buildings designed after July 1, 2025, include necessary CART equipment and software, and incorporates American Sign Language as a recognized foreign or world language in public school curricula. This part wouldn't apply to us. Additionally, the bill directs the Nevada Department of Education to conduct a study on the need for dedicated school for students who are deaf or hard of hearing. But the meat of this bill is certainly the requirement to have sign language interpreters at public meetings, which we, excuse me, which we estimate to cost about $45,000 annually at a rate of 10 to 14 meetings a month, with an average length of four hours and an estimated cost of $75 per hour for the interpreter that would be serving in that capacity. The equipment and software costs to be installed in any new building that the city may constructor move into in the future would likely be around $85,000, and then that software maintenance cost in this new building hypothetically would be about $35,000 to $50,000 a year.
So I've got a, sorry, I've got a question on that fiscal note also, because you said 10 to 14 meetings, public meetings? I don't understand. We have more than, we have 26, so how do we have 10 to 14?
A month.
Oh, per month?
Yeah.
And only $45,000 to have somebody at every meeting? I wonder if this is one, you know, certainly if we had somebody requesting it for an accommodation as we stayed on every agenda, but to have a, have a sign language interpreter at every public meeting, it really doesn't make any sense to have that expenditure made by the public when we have no one requesting that service. You're not? Oh, I thought this is.
That's how I read it.
I read it is required. Where are you reading it differently? Sorry? Right? Includes without provision of a registered sign language interpreter. You're saying it, it's not requiring us to have one?
So, Madam Mayor, if I may.
Sure, please.
The way I'm interpreting this.
Okay, which section?
Well, it's, it's, it's Section 1 of the bill. It's the mandatory language at the very end of subsection 1 of 241.020. It's that blue language, including without limitation, providing at public meetings a person who is registered to engage in the practice of sign language, and B, communication access real-time translation. So I don't read this mandatory provision to mandate the provision of these services at every meeting, just, you know, it's, it's basically, what it does is it provides an additional list or expands that list of included provisions that local government must provide as options in the event that a person with a disability needs that type of an accommodation. So to your point, and that's sort of a circumstance, when there is no person with a disability who is attending a meeting, the local government would not be under an obligation to provide that service, because as you said, that would be wholly illogical and would create a fiscal impact that is otherwise unnecessary.
But if there is a person with a disability, at that point, it would be required.
That's correct, but even in that instance, the way I read this mandatory provision is that these are just two of additional options, but not, you know, explicitly, this is what the local government must provide. So there may be other options, nothing that I can think of off the top of my head right now, but for instance, you know, with that, you know, the adverb, I think that's what it's called, and, so a person who is registered to engage in the practice of sign language and.
and incorporates American Sign Language as a recognized foreign or world language in public school curricula. This part wouldn't apply to us. Additionally, the bill directs the Nevada Department of Education to conduct a study on the need for dedicated school for students who are deaf or hard of hearing. But the, the meat of this bill is certainly the requirement to have sign language interpreters at public meetings, which we, excuse me, which we estimate to cost about $45,000 annually at a rate of 10 to 14 meetings a month with an average length of four hours and an estimated cost of $75 per hour for the interpreter that would be serving in that capacity. The equipment and software costs to be installed in any new building that the city may construct or move into in the future would likely be around $85,000. And then that software maintenance cost in this new building hypothetically would be about $35,000 to $50,000 a year.
So I've, I've got a, sorry, I've got a question on that fiscal note also because you said 10 to 14 meetings, public meetings? I, I don't understand. We have more than, we have 26, so how do we have 10 to 14? Oh, per month? And only $45,000 to have somebody at every meeting? I wonder if this is one, you know, certainly if we had somebody requesting it for an accommodation as we stayed on every agenda, but to have a, have a sign language interpreter at every public meeting, it really doesn't make any sense to have that expenditure made by the public when we have no one requesting that service. You're not? Oh, I thought this is.
That's how I read it.
I read it is required. Where are you reading it differently? Sorry? Right? Includes without provision of a registered sign language interpreter. You're saying it, it's not requiring us to have one?
So Madam Mayor, if I may.
Sure, please.
The way I'm interpreting this.
Okay, which section?
Well, it's, it's, it's Section 1 of the bill. It's the mandatory language at the very end of subsection 1 of 241.020. It's that blue language, including without limitation, providing at public meetings, a person who is registered to engage in the practice of sign language, and B, communication access real-time translation. So I don't read this mandatory provision to mandate the provision of these services at every meeting. Just, you know, it's, it's basically what it does is it provides an additional list or expands that list of included provisions that local government must provide as options in the event that a person with a disability needs that type of an accommodation. So to your point, and that's sort of a circumstance when there is no person with a disability who is attending a meeting, the local government would not be under an obligation to provide that service because as you said, that would be wholly illogical and would create a fiscal impact that is otherwise unnecessary.
But if there is a person with a disability at that point, it would be required.
That's correct, but even in that instance, the way I read this mandatory provision is that these are just two of additional options, but not, you know, explicitly, this is what the local government must provide. So there may be other options, nothing that I can think of off the top of my head right now. But for instance, you know, with that, you know, the, the adverb, I think that's what it's called, and so a person who is registered to engage in the practice of sign language and communication access real-time translation. Those are both essentially the same things. You can have a person live in the room providing that, you know, American Sign Language, or you can provide that technology, which also transcribes everything into text. So even though you have that and as the connector there, you would not have a requirement to provide both provisions to accommodate. It would be one or the other. But even in that instance, it's just an example, I guess is a way of putting it. It's an mandatory provision that says you have to include X, Y, or Z, but not all additional examples of what may be provided as a sort of accommodation, but not necessarily both, because one could read this to say, well, you have to provide both of these options. It's just, you know, here are additional, you know, options. That's typically what that term is used for in context, including without limitation. You've probably all seen various examples of that throughout NRS and NAC, and in fact, our own code, CCMC, where you have a provision that says, you know, a local government or a person must do X, Y, and Z, including without limitation, and then a laundry list of different options. So it's basically a drop-down menu of options, but I don't read this as saying statutorily, you must do this at every meeting. It's just that we must provide the accommodation when we need to. So I would ask Cameron, you know, who's, you know, in touch with, you know, the sponsor of the bill, you know, to maybe speak with the legislature and get that clarification on the record. I don't want to task him with more work, and he's extremely busy, but that's, that's how I read it, and that's how I interpret that provision.
But on page nine, number six, that one is mandatory. That we have to, design any new buildings must include the equipment. That one's mandatory. Okay. Anybody else?
We're, we're also at the will of the council. On page 10, section 3, is the council, councils shall establish standards of content and performance, mostly to do with students, but number nine, including without limitation, American Sign Language. So at some point in time, some entity, entity within Carson City will be mandated to do these things.
Find out more information. Okay, let's go to Assembly Bill 307, please.
So Assembly Bill 307 alters the taxation structure of cannabis sales in our state. It eliminates excise taxes on wholesale cannabis sales and raises the excise tax on retail cannabis sales from 10 to 14 and 1/4 percent, removes direct allocations of tax revenue to local governments, directing all funds first to the Cannabis Compliance Board and then to the State Education Fund. Effectively, municipalities no longer have a guaranteed share of cannabis tax revenue. We've looked at this and estimated a $150,000 revenue loss for Carson City, taking away the portion the county receives in sales taxes from sales of cannabis inside Carson City. And so that's relatively a simpler bill than the other ones before it, but this is something we're also tracking in a very new piece of legislation.
Any question, thought?
Yeah, did, did we have a fiscal impact on loss of revenue for us?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was reading while you were talking.
No, no, it's okay. Yeah, so the revenue loss anticipated right now is $150,000.
Well, I guess, I guess we're like every other individual. When you have something and they take it away, what do we do to replace the $150,000 that's in our budget? Do we have a rationale? I, I, it was funny that they're raising the, the sales portion from 10 to the 14, so that looked like they were trying to replace and get out of doing both retail and wholesale.
Or goes to the state.
But now we're cut out, so it's really hard because I understand efficiencies and effectiveness in saying, maybe we don't want to do, you know, tax at both the wholesale level and the retail level, but why are we being eliminated for, for the share when they increased the retail amount? So I think again, some understanding here of where they think we're going to make up the $150,000.
I agree, especially when costs associated with problems that come from use fall on communities.
Okay. Yep, sorry, you're getting more workload. That's all right. Okay, AGR 1?
Yeah, so this resolution proposes a change to the Nevada Constitution so that when real estate is sold or transferred, it won't qualify for certain tax adjustments based on the age of improvements for the first year, and afterward, those adjustments will reset as if the improvements were new. It also requires the legislature to create a program that provides property tax refunds to residents who are 62 or older or have a disability. I'll say right here, we do have some questions that we're working through on this legislation with our partners at the League of Cities. We're a little confused on the type of transfer that this would apply to. So in our fiscal note, we included all types of transfers in our analysis, and perhaps that is what it refers to, but I just, because that is a point of clarity we still need, I wanted to put that out there. It may not be. Removing depreciations in the tax cap after the transfer would yield Carson City an additional $11,287,000 in revenues for all transfers, which occurred in the calendar year 2024, as an example. Future years would depend on the, excuse me, number of transfers. The fiscal cost to us comes in the form of DEVNET, the city's property tax system, which does not track demographic information requested in AGR 1, so there would be an unknown cost to upgrade that system, and that's a bit more technical than I understand. So I am working with our treasurer to understand the limitations of our system and how that would apply to us, because that's a very unique impact compared to, at least in my conversations with other cities, it seems that they are able, whatever systems they use, they tend to have this information more easily. So that would, I think, be an impact that is specific to us that we're still working to analyze. The treasurer's office would require an additional FTE to process refunds for those over 62 and individuals with disabilities, as well as the data entry for demographic information on property owners. So there's the revenue, and then there's just the cost there of the, I guess, implementing the new record, record-keeping, I guess, if you could call it that, for individuals 62 or have disability.
My question on that is, why, why collect the money and give it back? That's, that's nonsensical. Why would you, why would you not exempt it to begin with? Why, I mean, that, that to me seems beyond inefficient. To take the money in and then turn around and give it back? That makes no sense. And, and the transfer thing really has me concerned. There are a lot of transfers, you know, trust to a deed.
Between family members.
Between family members, you know, deaths in family. Yeah, there's.
So the way.
A million dollars is too much, frankly. We don't need that much.
Well, and are you reading this that the legislature kind of like at a later date will come up with the rules and regulations for? Because it doesn't give us any details for the people aged 62.
Right.
So potentially everyone that just has someone that's 62 years old, I mean, would be entitled to, I'm assuming the reason it's not what you're saying is because they don't intend it to be all people aged 62, so it'll be a refund where your, in the old days, we had this when I worked at taxation, and the form had a graduated income level on it, and so you did your certifications and provided proof of your income to get your refund.
Well, if they did something like that, I guess, but, but you could pre-qualify. If, if this even happens, you can, you should have the obligation to, to pre-qualify. And frankly, not everyone who's over 62 needs to have their taxes abated. I mean, I, you know, I mean, certainly some people could, but the income thing makes some sense.
Right. I'm just saying it's pretty ambiguous and we, pretty difficult to have a discussion when we don't know what the.
Parameters are.
Right, what the scales are, or the, you know, how many of ours? We have, what, oh, 25% over the age of 60, 62? So that potentially could exempt a fourth of our properties. And I don't know, just interesting. And then is this residents only? Not a business? Anything? Real property sold or transferred?
Everything.
Right?
It was my, yes, that was my understanding. However, I'm no property guru, so I will make sure that my understanding is correct. But yes, at this time, I agree with your interpretation.
Wow, this is a high watch, I'd say, right? And come back and keep this to come back to us with more details.
I, yes, absolutely. I will note it's a high watch for our advocacy orgs and every other municipality in the state, too.
If I think about it, what's our property tax? No, how much total we collect, what? 30, 40 million?
Yeah, somewhere.
Somewhere in there, 30 to 40 million, and I, well, so I'm going to laugh and say, oh, they want to give it to me 11 million, and then they're going to take it back. Right, if a fourth of our properties, I don't know. I'm just saying we need more information to understand this one and its impact.
I think the abatement in the general funds are between like 10 million and 14 million.
I said the 11 would.
Was this the League of Cities bill?
No. But it is Assembly Member Anderson, right? So I'm believing this is a huge push by many for the reset portion of this bill. The problem is it has more than just a reset. So there are many local governments that are, and, and we certainly should be working with NACO, too, not just the league.
Yes.
Because the county does the tax anyway.
An accidental omission.
Right. So I think there, there's a lot of discussion on the abatements, and, and so trying to find a palatable way. You, you listen to many that say they don't want growth. You don't want new residences, you don't want this, you don't want that. But when you get your properties are fully depreciated, I get less money each year then from my existing property base. And so there's some, that's where the thought process is. Why don't we leave an individual so we never have to lose their home because they can't pay the taxes? But that you reset it based maybe on a sale price or? And that's the other thing they don't talk about.
Some states do a sale beyond a certain degree of consanguinity if you're, you know, if you sell it to a son or a daughter or grandparent or parent.
It's exempt.
It's, yeah.
Anyway, we need more information, please. Okay. SB 71?
Yes, so SB 71 requires local governments to post information on purchases and procedures for requesting notice of solicit, excuse me, solicitations or other methods of obtaining contracts on the local government website. So this also comes with the Nevada Diverse Business Advisory Council, and it adds NACO a seat on that board, of which, of course, we are a member of NACO. The fiscal impact that we've calculated for this is $87,000 and, excuse me, $87,037 for year one and $86,658 for year two. If passed, Carson City would need a full-time employee to create the webpage and maintain it indefinitely. The, in a moment here, I will have the specific information that we need to have on the website out here for you. But essentially, yes, it's mainly just being much more specific about how to do business with Carson City from a vendor standpoint beyond N-GEM, I think is what we're all familiar with here. This would be a more customized version of our own, I guess, our own N-GEM in, in the terms of the information we post, but obviously, the actual mechanism would still be N-GEM for most of what we do. But yes, that is SB 71. And one moment while I pull up the website, the specific website information from the, from the bill. Apologies, I, my laptop died, so I'm working off my phone.
So what, while you're looking, I mean, it, it basically would require us to post, you're talking supplies, material, equipment, and services. We're not just talking things that hit the bid level. You're talking anything. I mean, it's essentially anything. I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, again, why create the extra work? There's state laws that allow for anyone who wants to bid to follow the bid process. It's very little that we purchase in quantity that doesn't hit the bid requirement, right? Isn't it 50,000 still?
Depending, 100,000 on some projects, right?
Some things are 50, but.
Type of purchase.
But I mean, you know, anything we buy in quantity is going to hit that bid level. Why, I, I, I don't understand why, and why spend the money to create a whole nother state agency? A whole nother state agency to do this? I, I, I don't feel like we should support this personally.
Well, the, the council.
It's for Clark County.
Is our Commission on Minority Affairs is already created.
In Clark County. This creates it for the whole state.
When I looked at that webpage. When I, when I look at that webpage for the Commission on Minority Affairs, it appears it's far beyond Clark County.
Okay.
This is also far beyond just telling us we need a webpage informing the community of what we intend to buy. This is a bill that is incredibly racist in that it requires us to make efforts to sell to diverse businesses. And if you read the definition on diverse, that excludes anybody, excludes white males. We must report what our efforts have been. It requires us, essentially, to interview every business that wants to purchase from Carson City to tell us how diverse they are. We have to go out and investigate a company so that we know that they're diverse, so that we know we can sell to them? This is ridiculous.
Yeah, like I said, there's provisions in the law that allow for it to be handled the way it is, and it's been working, so I, I don't, I don't think we should support it.
And, and besides that, the Commission on Minority Affairs is not diverse in their own makeup. This is a straight no for me.
When, when we're done with this review, I will bring this one back for public comment before we take action. Thank you. Okay, so let's go to SB 199.
Yes, so this one is one of the, I think, newest themes at the legislature, AI. And this is one of the first ones I've seen that directly involves local governments in that technology. A brief overview, SB 199 requires county recorders to develop, implement, and maintain policies, procedures, and protocols to verify the identity of individuals filing documents and prevent fraud involving artificial intelligence systems. These measures aim to protect against fraudulent filings that could exploit AI-generated documents or signatures. Section 17 is the part of the bill that goes over AI fraud and prevention. Essentially, since this is such highly specialized work, we, it would require security experts. Then their salaries would be around $127,000 per annum. This is, I think, a, a, a pretty big kind of swath, broad attempt to protect public information from AI fraud. And that's not an area that I know a lot about, but I do know that it is increasing. We're all, you know, we all know about robo-calls and things like that. This is the legislature getting out ahead of AI fraud, which I think a lot of, we haven't even seen yet. But that is certainly the impetus of the legislation. It comes from protection, and that is the fiscal cost that we've identified for this.
I think this one has a lot more impact, too, where like section 18 prohibits a peace officer from using an artificial intelligence system to generate an investigative or police report. I think there's a lot of new technologies, and you're right. I think they're trying to say we want to stop frauds and things of that nature. And so it's like people stealing people's homes, right? Your home is paid off, and they do a quick claim deed. They don't do anything but accept a piece of paper. So I appreciate what they're trying to do here. Does anybody have it where we think certain sections? Does anybody have it where we think certain sections, we want more information to see how this develops? Are you anticipating, do you know if there's already amendments being proposed for this bill?
None that I have seen as of this meeting, but I will double-check with the committees and get back to you. But at this time, no.
And I'd really like to hear, I'm, I'm with Supervisor Giomi, if we could have some more details from some of the, our recorder and some that, how onerous can we even do it? Implement it, exact, well, again, I, I do, though, want to combat the fraud. I mean, I think all of us are wanting to.
I appreciate the effort to stay in front of this.
Yes, and we certainly want our recorder to have the right tools to know something's a fraud.
But I mean, isn't fraud fraud? I mean, don't we already have laws to deal with fraud? And I guess that's what I would say, whether it comes from AI or it comes from, you know, some other intentional act. Fraud is fraud. But no, you're right, I, I don't, I don't, I don't even know where to begin to wrap your arms around this. I, I, you know, I, I think by the time my granddaughter is my age, the world is gonna look way, way different because of that. And I, I don't know what that is, I don't know. So I, I don't know how you even begin to tackle it. It, it seems like an insurmountable mountain.
It does.
Maybe I should consult artificial intelligence to see if I can learn something. Perhaps that's what I should do. Let me go to ChatGPT and see what I can.
Come up with.
Come up with.
Mayor, if I may.
Certainly.
I would note, and you're right, I apologize for omitting the part of the bill that talked about not using AI to generate police reports. I would think, without having had further discussions on this particular bill, I would think that would probably be because AI, part of when you sign up and use this, use the software, is you are giving that company permission to store and use whatever you put into ChatGPT to help train its future models. So if you are writing a police report and you are putting in all this data, ChatGPT gets to keep that.
Well, you have to be careful, too, because Microsoft Word uses artificial intelligence, too. And there's no one here who doesn't use that.
Yep.
So just blanketly saying that it can't be used is gonna be a real detriment.
That's what my concern is, there's many templates, many programs. I think it's gonna be harder and harder to have any software that you own that doesn't have components, right? And so I guess I, I really am just looking at this to be, is this reasonable? Because I agree with Supervisor Giomi. I think within five years, there will be zero that does not have artificial intelligence in their apps.
Perhaps even more important than, than, well, or equally important than laws trying to wrangle it are disclosures by companies that do business with government to show where they're using artificial intelligence and how it's being used in the process of carrying out the contracts that we're engaging with them. But I, I think we can address that in our contracts that we write with people. And force, I don't think we need a law to do that. But I think that's something we should be looking at is, you know, as we do these contracts with vendors, how are they using artificial intelligence? What are they doing with the data that we're providing them? Because to your point, Cameron, you know, if they're using AI and they're taking information from a project they're doing for us and inputting that into AI, it isn't their information, it's our information. And, and what is happening with that, I think we should have an understanding of. I don't know if we can stop it, but I think we need to have an understanding of, of what happens to that.
Supervisor Shutey.
Yeah, the, in section eighteen, back to the police officer using artificial intelligence to generate investigative or police reports. A police report is based on very specific information that only pertains to those involved. It's not based on data coming from other events. And so I think in this regard, it's very important to be specific about that.
So is this, we're looking to take action or just closely watch? Closely watch? Okay, let's go to SB two oh eight.
So SB two oh eight allows revenue from the nine-one-one surcharge to be used for constructing or upgrading emergency reporting facilities and establishes spending priorities for that purpose. However, it also removes the county's authority to impose a surcharge for purchasing and maintaining event recording devices or body cams after October first, twenty twenty-nine and, oh, pardon me, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Oh, uh, no, I'm, I'm done. And eliminates related references in law. Counties with such a surcharge between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-nine must submit annual reports on efforts to find alternative funding. And I just have some fiscal information here. So if passed, it would remove our authority for the nine-one-one surcharge in body worn or car cameras. We currently spend two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars per year on these items with our contract ending in twenty twenty-six.
Do you know why this is being? I, I know Steinbeck is former fire chief, so maybe there's, you know, he didn't, he didn't get enough donuts delivered to him or something, or?
No, no.
No, I shouldn't have said.
No, I, um.
I know Chief Steinbeck, but I mean.
For the record, Kenny Furlong Sheriff, um, no, I, I know that, um, different jurisdictions went about the camera systems differently. Some applied the surcharge, some did not. It's, the challenge to this board, it's, it's a considerable amount of money that is designed. The, the statute is primarily designed for nine-one-one and it's, and it's apparatus. But, um, I, I don't have an answer for you. I, sorry.
Yeah, I would like to see us oppose that portion of it. I, I, I mean, I think there's a lot of, in my opinion, uh, uh, mother may I in here from the state, which I don't think is necessary. We already have a nine-one-one surcharge committee, which this body approve, appoints. And that body holds public meetings, people can go and make public comment. And their expenditures come to this board.
Correct.
On top of that, so there's plenty of light being shown on how these funds are being used. You know, facilities is a good addition, I think it makes some sense. We're never gonna have enough money to build facilities, but, but it seems like a reasonable use based on the purpose behind it. I, I, I just don't like taking out the, the camera part. I think we can ask if they would be willing to amend that out. I, I don't understand their concern with that being in there. I, I, I just don't.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna guess they want it for facilities and therefore you gotta kick cameras out.
Well, you don't have to.
Somebody's trying, no, somebody else is trying to save money, right?
You know, you could, if, if the, if the local government decides they'd rather use it for.
Their choice.
Facilities than cameras, that's their choice.
Should be our choice, should be our choice.
The money's gotta come from somewhere, it's not just gonna, you know, materialize. So, you know, if you take it away from, from cameras, because you wanna use it for facilities, then the money you would have spent on the facility, it's gonna have to go into the cameras anyway, so it's, you know.
Half a dozen of the other.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I wanna do is open public comment on, um, on any of this, any of the legislation. Okay, then I'll bring it back up here. Let's discuss with, we would like to take action on SB seventy-one. Is someone want to, is that a motion to oppose? Supervisor White?
I, I move that the Carson City Board of Supervisors oppose SB seventy-one.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to oppose it. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any, and, okay, any, any against? Against the against, double negative, that's really good. But this is in opposition, just so we were all clear, let the record reflect, it was unanimous. Let's talk about SB two oh eight. Supervisor Giomi, do you wanna make a motion on that one? Support with amendment, oppose with amendment?
Yeah, I mean, I would move that we support SB two oh eight with a suggested amendment to remove the sunset provision on funding camera, video, cameras and body mounted and vehicle cameras.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, it was unanimous. And I, and I do really prefer, when possible, that we're supporting with amendment instead of opposing.
Yes.
Right, and I just, I just really wanna, right, it's the better way to do things. It's like, hey, there are good parts, you just need to help us. Ms. Paulson?
I just got some additional information on, which one was it? AB sixty-six?
The courts.
The courts. So it includes five employees, two judicial clerks, a bailiff, a law clerk, and a judicial assistant. And then the remodel was eighty thousand out of that four hundred and fourteen thousand. And that, I, that didn't include, you know, the expansion. It was how they could remodel based on the space that they currently have. I believe they sent in this fiscal note before we had the discussion of whether or not we were moving forward with the remo, with the expansion.
Well, I, I mean, to me, you separate, you could separate the expansion that we are having to already do.
Right.
Because of Justice Court, that should be separated out. And I, I don't know what the heck you get for eighty thousand dollars, I, I.
It was just remodeling space for the chambers, judges.
So that, that roving court then becomes the third court?
Correct.
Well, okay. Can you get those five employees for, for then, there's no way you can get five employees for three hundred thousand dollars then.
I think that was just a partial year. It was talking about hiring the position in December of twenty-six.
Yeah, but.
But that would be, that would be fiscal twenty-seven, so I think they had the fiscal note in the wrong.
Let's just check the numbers, because that's not enough.
Yeah. Well, what a full year, and our fiscal year, fiscal note's still a two-year, a biennium discuss? Yeah, that's not enough. Yeah, okay. So we have enough on that? Anybody, anything else? Thank you so much, uh, we can't wait for ne, uh, next times. Okay, we are now gonna move on to Agenda Item twelve A. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the Selection of Turf Infill Material for Use at the Upper Softball Fields Located at John D. Winter's Centennial Park. Mr. Wentworth and Team. Those are choices. We need AI in our computer.
Good morning, Nick Wentworth, Carson City Parks Project Manager, for the record. We're here today, as instructed previously, to, for selection of an infill material for Centennial Park softball fields. We were presented with six alternatives to traditional crumb rubber. You can see those displayed here in the presentation. To start whittling that down, I first looked at what was, what were domestic products versus foreign products? Also, we've got two listed there, cork or coconut, that were the most expensive. Those are the foreign products as well as being the most expensive. So kind of initially just mark those off the list in an effort to reduce the research going into each of these. The remaining, or all of the natural infill products, would require an underlayment mat. And we can, we'll get into more of what that is. The sixth and final option listed here, encapsulated rubber, is rubber material coated with urethane to seal the individual pieces. And that is an optional material to, it doesn't necessarily require the underlayment mat, it can be used in conjunction with it. So what's an underlayment mat? Synthetic turf underlayment mats are made from polyethylene foam, rubber, or polypropylene beads fused together with adhesives. Different mats are designed for better drainage, shock attenuation, or a combination of both. The engineering firm, design company Lloyd, has spec'd two separate products they feel are the best options for our climate region and site-specific needs of drainage and performance. Those specific products are ProPlay and Brock. This would, to note, this would not be the underlayment mat displayed here on the far right is a poured-in-place option. So the two that would be spec'd for this application would be the center material or the one shown on the left. So what is encapsulated rubber? Encapsulated rubber infill material refers to a type of rubber used as infill for artificial turf where the individual rubber particles are coated with a protective layer essentially encapsulating them to reduce the release of potentially harmful chemicals and improve the overall performance and longevity of the turf surface. So I put together some pros and cons here and of, one, just looking at, there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of difference between those other natural infill materials. The real question becomes is if we can live with encapsulated rubber or we wanna go with the natural route. So, um, honestly, it was a little bit difficult for me to find the pros of the natural infill materials over the encapsulated rubber option. Through the research that I did, it seems like the turf industry also recognized the concerns of traditional crumb rubber and took these strides to transform the best performing infill option into a more environmentally safe solution. Natural infill materials will cost approximately six hundred thousand dollars more at the time of construction, will also need to be replenished more often, which comes out to around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars every ten years. Encapsulated rubber is heavier and will migrate off the field via wind and players' clothing less and will also not decompose. The anticipated material needing to be replenished for encapsulated rubber is closer to a cu, a few thousand dollars every couple of years versus the hundred and fifty. Organic materials also can host weeds more easily even before they break down and may need to be sprayed with herbicides to prevent damage to the turf itself.
Can I, can I ask you, can you go back one?
Yep.
You, you listed warmer surface temps in peak summer months. Is, is the encapsulated rubber warmer than the regular rubber? Or, or is just using rubber overall is more? Encapsulated is more than unencapsulated?
Not to my knowledge, no. It actually could be less than standard, traditional crumb rubber. Because of that coating on there, you're not directly heating up rubber.
So you're, when you're saying that it's warmer, it's in comparison to natural.
Correct, correct, yes.
Thank you.
And on that note, you know, we don't receive, I think the real heat concerns with synthetic turf come in the applications in Phoenix, Las Vegas, places where the, my understanding from Anthony and throughout this very long process is that we may reach, all of you know, we break a hundred degrees, not even five times a year, or maybe it's five days a year, but it's not, it's not like Las Vegas or Phoenix where we're sitting at a hundred and eighteen degrees for three months out of the year and that turf's gonna be a hundred and fifty degrees on a hundred and eighteen-degree day. Here, we, we have the majority of our temps under a hundred, or it's in the high eighties and nineties. And of course, every website will tell you something different, that it's gonna be twenty-five degrees warmer on the turf versus natural, or some of them say thirty-five or forty. It, varying accounts depending on which website or product you're looking at. Was any other questions on that? So I've got some cost breakdowns here. I listed the base bid items at the top in yellow. That would be, those numbers reflect building, building four playable fields. I also went ahead and added the contingency and, oh, sorry, and other necessary items that would be required to actually build fields that would be playable. So that's what's included in the yellow there with all of the alternate bid items in white. The alternate items in white. The alternate items in white have all been included in a CIP request for this year as well. We also, in that CIP request, we also included the budget shortfall, the existing budget for the construction of the fields themselves, the items in yellow, and the alternate bid items in white, as well as in that CIP request, you'll see the cost to refresh the concession restroom. So this is just a quick summary. Obviously, there's more details on the previous page, but this kind of breaks it down for the existing funding we have at the top. That includes some quality-of-life capital from previous two fiscal years. And then you've got the comparison in the middle for the softball fields themselves. Whether you select encapsulated rubber or natural infill material puts us, either way, puts us over the 5.8 million that we have. And the add alternate items add up to 1.1 million and some change there. You can see additional projects at the bottom that will need to be considered at some point. Pretty much in my idea of the priority level at the bottom, that aren't included in those above numbers.
So all we're talking about today is the selection of the infill product. All the other things are not on the agenda for discussion. Those will be in budget actions, just to let you know in case you're following along with the.
Today's action should give instruction on which infill material to use. Our choice for the natural products would be the SafeShell walnut husks or the encapsulated rubber. Those would be the two that we narrowed this down to. And then the CIP request for this year will include that budget shortfall. We can adjust that depending on the infill selection. It also has listed out all those alternate bid items that were listed in white, as well as I included the concession restroom refresh for 350. You can see there.
So let's just go back to the page, if we may, that discusses the two fill options.
This one?
Backwards. Back, back one. Okay. So the choice or discussion today is to center on do, which of these two we feel is the appropriate infill so that they can prepare bid documents and maybe scare us with answers that don't match either of these, but we've not been lucky. So can I ask, on the natural infill, what, are there overlapping products that encapsulate the natural infill? That's the same product used on the rubber infill? Is it?
Not, not to my knowledge. You wouldn't have any.
Urethane?
From my understanding, there'd be no reason to encapsulate it because you're not trying to keep the environment out of walnut husks. The difference I see, they, so the natural infill products don't provide the same shock attenuation that any rubber product is going to. So you have to supplement those with the shock pad underneath, or the underlayment mat.
But no product in, in the underlayments or the pads or anything match? I, I, I thought I heard something the other day that just intrigued me, that some of the same product, so that you don't gain everything that you're looking to gain on a natural infill because of the product that you have to put in the underlayments and things? And so I, I'm just wondering.
I thought you were, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I thought you were asking if the natural infill, if there were natural infills that were encapsulated. No, you, we would just be, not that I know of, but we would be required to use that underlayment mat that is made up of many of the same properties as the encapsulated rubber, or includes urethane.
That's what my point, thank you. That's kind of what my point is. I'm trying to fully understand when we're making a decision that if, it's not just money solely, right? So the encapsulated rubber is less expensive and has some other benefits. But when I looked at another component of this, the natural infill requires an underlayment that's using the same material. So I'm not gaining what I thought fully I was going to gain.
You're correct.
But, okay. I thought I, I thought I, I read way too much and then I might confuse it with other things that I read. So I mean, that kind of helps me know that based on, and then the public that wants to use it, there is comment, you know, all over the place, of course. But is, is there a reason for us not to do the encapsulated rubber infill? Is that what you guys are recommending?
Are you asking me for my opinion of which one we should use?
Did the department have an opinion? Did you guys have an opinion?
If you want my opinion, I think that, like I said, it's hard for me to find the cons of using encapsulated rubber.
That's what I'm after. Okay. So we should save the money because there isn't enough? That's what I'm looking for, is you put your growing cons and.
And we got a lot of things that we could use that money for that are going to add to the overall user experience at the complex and are going to make for a better sports complex and.
Supervisor Shutey?
Thank you for all the work you've been doing on this. And I know it's been an arduous journey. So for starters, as you know, I, early on, was really struggling with artificial turf. And, and even several years ago, when we were talking about landscaping around businesses, you know, I'm not interested in artificial turf. I'm interested in other options. And through this journey and process, it really is a question of finding that balance. And so with our weather, I was thinking, well, why are, why is the playing season so limited? But then we, you have to consider what it takes for healthy fields and grass and growing season and all of that. And so I have, while not liking artificial turf, I have warmed to the idea. And so then the conversation about natural infill. And I think, I so appreciate this conversation because I think it's worth noting that we all care deeply about the environment and our community and what's the right thing to do. And so I'm grateful for the conversation with the, about the corn husks and the walnut shells and all the above. So kind of on the, following up on what the mayor said, it's that underlayment mat. So what I'm seeing is that by using a natural infill, we're now having to introduce a mat that in essence has quite a few of the same components that the rubber does. And so we're not reducing that or taking it away. We are just using it in a different form, and then we have the natural infill. What I'm finding most concerning now about the natural infill, and so I'd love to have more information, the requiring of herbicides. And so can you speak to that a little bit about the why? What is it about this product that would then lead us to need to use herbicides and pesticides when otherwise we wouldn't have to? Because that has its own cost to the environment.
So you, you're absolutely right that I sort of came to the same conclusion that, you know, urethane is present in the backing of the turf itself already. So there's really no way to escape some of the products that are used in synthetic turf, no matter which infill material you use. But then, to respond to your question, a natural material or infill product is going to break down and decompose, much like you, you put rocks down on top of weed barrier fabric. Well, the crevices between those rocks are going to fill with decomposed leaves and pine needles and everything else. Now you've got organic material in an, in a.
On top of organic material.
Right. On top of a fabric that's meant to prevent the weeds. Well, now you've introduced organic material in the top that can, you know, that those seeds that are blowing around in the air or transferred from humans or pets or whatever it is now have an environment that, that holds moisture and can, they can grow in. And we certainly, after you see the size of those numbers, of the size of investment we'd be making into this sports complex, the last thing we want is to have sagebrush growing out of the middle of it and tearing apart this expensive field that now we need to cut out and patch or replace, or growing through that and destroying, you know, the backing on that turf or any of the infrastructure that we've paid millions of dollars to install.
Thank you. Supervisor Giomi?
So a few things. You know, I think in a world where we had all the money available to us to spend on Centennial fields that we wanted, I don't think any of us would disagree that it'd be great to have natural grass there. Be great to have a warmed, natural grass field with warmth underneath it so that we could play longer with a staff that is there all the time to keep those fields in playing shape. But we can't afford that. It's, it's not going to happen. Overwhelmingly, the softball players that I've talked to who are going to use that field 70% of the time are in favor of the synthetic turf and overwhelmingly in favor of crumb rubber because of the impact nature of playing on fields that are not like that. I've spoken to people who have played on walnut shelf fields and, and you do add absorbing pads beneath it, but they're not as soft feeling, they're not as natural feeling as, or shock-absorbing as the rubber. And so I, I'm in support of the, and to me, it seems like the encapsulated rubber is, is a way to help with that encapsulation and maintain some of that product where it's intended to stay. So I, I'm in support of encapsulated rubber. It just, it seems like the logical choice to me.
Okay. I'm going to take any public comment on this item. Mr. French?
Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. I'd like to suggest that herbicides and pesticides will still need to be sprayed on the field on occasion, no matter what you choose as far as infill in, or turf, or matting. And all those things need to be considered individually, and we have not. And to have any discussion about cost at this point is inappropriate. I've done some study and I've mentioned some of the findings that I've found. Infill is very important to the length and time turf is going to survive. Sand due to its, what is it? Its aggressiveness towards other things around it like sandpaper, Kenwear. I think that will be substantiated by Anthony, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch his last name. But the deal is that your choice on that infill is very important to the length and life of your turf. And I'm thinking, okay, walnuts. Is there any consideration about the exposure to walnuts of children that have issues with nuts? I'm, I'm concerned about that. The coconut and the cork seem to be the one that maintain temperature the best, seem to, even though it's organic, not to necessarily degrade and doesn't seem to have the same effect on the blades as the other infills that I was looking at. Walnuts, as opposed to just covering what we were worried about before. And I think, yes, we've got to consider those pads. One, one thing that the infill does also is either provide a good cushion or not. Some of them are better at that than not. Some of the cushions they put underneath are better at it and not. Some of them will keep weeds out better than others. So there's a multi-factor situation here, and we're not touching on them. And that is a shame. And to suggest that, well, a lot of people like it, they prefer it, and it might cost less. I don't think our environment should be put to those easy considerations. We have to go deeper. The health of our children and of our critters, the habitat itself. Thank you very much.
Do I have any other public comment on this item? No, I'll bring it back up here. Supervisor White?
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't get my hand raised before you went on to public comment. A couple of things. The mayor brought up at the beginning of this about encapsulating the natural materials. I understand that's not available today, but I would ask industry leaders to take a look at that because two things that have come up today. If those natural materials were encapsulated, they would last longer and that would help defray the cost, the initial cost. And secondly, what Mr. French just noted with the walnuts, nut allergies. I think you, you could address, you know, the, the, the natural materials would be more acceptable because you're addressing something in that regard. Something that came to my mind just yesterday in the realm of the maintenance for these fields. What is the cost and the need and the ramification of the disinfectant needs for when there's vomit or dog mess or little diseases that creep around in this turf? What, what's the arrangement for disinfection?
So part of the, I'll let Anthony add to whatever I may miss. Part of the design would be to include quick couplings, which is a device plugged into your water main line to where you can run over there with a 100-foot hose and plug it in and wash the turf down. I am not, I have not gotten that far into it as far as what type of disinfectant or what we would use to address individual scenarios like that.
Anthony Stevenson, Prince Up With Lloyd Consulting Group. So the, adding on to what Nick had said, so there's the quick coupler loop for watering, and then there's, you can generally use most any disinfectants. The manufacturers in their O and M policies basically state which disinfectants, whether it's like a bleach, like a diluted bleach, or some type of off-the-shelf type thing like the green stuff, I can't remember the name. Simple green, thank you. Yeah, so it's, there's definitely policy and procedure for cleaning the messes up that can be used. And then you'll also, there's maintenance equipment, sweepers, groomers. And so the sweeps, any type of deleterious material on the field ends up getting swept up into a basket.
Are those costs included in what we saw various times in the maintenance?
My understanding, Nick Wentworth, Carson City Parks Project Manager. My understanding is that the sweepers and maintenance level that we would have to perform on the fields for synthetic turf is equal to, if not less than, what we're currently doing. So.
No, I, I was talking specifically.
The equipment?
Disinfection. Is that included?
No, I, I guess I hadn't thought of, I, I'm not sure how often the softball leagues may vomit on the turf fields. I don't play adult softball. I, I deal with youth sports where that's really.
I guess it depends on the tournament, tournament and the quantity of adult beverages consumed. But I, I didn't see, you know, a prolific vomiting anywhere. So, you know, I guess the, the other comment I would say to you is that I, I. So, you know, I guess the other comment I would say to you is that I, you know, if you have the, if you went with, you're going to have an issue with organics, human organics, regardless of the surface. So, you know, I think Supervisor White's point is well taken that that it's just something that has to be looked at, but it has to be looked at regardless of where, I mean, if someone slides and there's blood on the dirt, you have to go out disinfect or clean up the dirt. If someone were to do it on the, you know, vomit on the the organic compounds, you might have actually a bigger problem than on the fully synthetic compounds because they're going to absorb potential contaminants. So, you know, I think if anything, encapsulated rubber is going to be more resistant to long-term bioissues.
Well, we have cleaning products currently onsite, obviously with a concession stand and kitchen and huge restrooms. I guess I never would anticipate those cleaning or disinfecting costs on the fields to exceed what's currently happening on the concrete or in surrounding areas to begin with.
So finally, I'm a little confused about what we're doing. At the very beginning, Lori, you said we were here just to decide what infill, but the way this agenda item is noticed, it appears to me we're giving authorization to move forward. Example, in the agenda title, it talks about
Just the infill.
Put the project out for bid after a selection is made. And then in the proposed motion, it says, proceed with the John D. Winters Centennial Park Project, and the fiscal impact is listed as $5 million. So that's certainly more than the cost of the infill. So it looks to me like we're looking for authorization to move forward and additionally telling them what infill material to use.
What infill material and then to go to bid with that infill material. All things then come back to us to award contracts. So there's no awarding here. It's simply telling them which turf infill will be used for bid. That's all. And then all the rest of the decisions will come back in normal contract processes. So it doesn't let them award anything. Oh.
Today, we're telling them more than what infill to use. We're telling them to go to bid. That's more than telling them what infill to use.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Supervisor Horton?
I'll keep it short and sweet. Nick, thank you very much and your staff for answering all of our questions. I know it was intense for a while, but you guys are doing a great job, and I appreciate it very much. I also want to thank everybody who's out there watching. I know there are a bunch of players who contacted me, and they're keeping an eye on this situation. And like Supervisor Giomi said, the majority of them are in favor of the encapsulated rubber. I think after all of our research and looking at it, I am definitely opposed to chrome rubber that is not encapsulated. That's a no-no. But I think I'm comfortable moving forward and supporting this.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Giomi, a motion, please.
I move to direct staff to proceed with the John D. Winters Centennial Park Project using the encapsulated rubber infill material for the upper softball fields.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Let the record reflect, it was unanimous. Thank you. We're now on to agenda item number 13, our non-action items. Does any updates? Does any member have any updates or anything to share? Supervisor Giomi?
Briefly, I got an opportunity to go to a couple of classrooms. It is reading week, and I went to Borderwick, I almost said Borderwick Prey. It's not Borderwick Prey anymore. Anyway, Borderwick was able to read to students, and it was a fun time. And they were always so appreciative of having someone other than their teacher come in and visit them. So it was a great time. And I know Mayor did some as well at a different school, so I'll let her comment on that. But it's a great time, and it's great to see the kids and how enthusiastic they are.
It was definitely a joy. I think I read to 13 classrooms, so I told you I've been doing a lot of reading. That's what I meant this week.
I didn't hit that many.
And if I have to see a perfect purple pointy crayon in the near future, nope. I've had enough of that book for a little while, but it was great fun.
Mine was Corderoy, that little bear.
Oh, I didn't do that one.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have to switch books next time. Supervisor Shute?
Well, I, yeah, the same. And I told the students that I would give them a shout out, all of these lovely thank yous, and a special shout out to Lakeland and Anthony and Delilah. You know, it is just so wonderful, and these little tiny kiddos. And I always show, it's a book on perspective. It's called Zoom, and it's amazing. And, you know, it's great for adults. Adults love it. And then even the little ones, and they're just looking. And that little Anthony, boy, he's like, oh, wait, slow down. Let me look. You know, just searching. And it was so, so, so delightful. And I look forward, I'll be reading again on Friday. I also, on a different note, shout out to Carson Water Sub Conservancy District. They hosted their watershed forum on Monday and Tuesday. Or, yeah. And it was really a wonderful forum. And, you know, just, it's great to hear the collaborative nature of all the different, you know, the counties and the communities and folks working together to keep our watershed healthy. And then we had, we worked on the Carson River Master Plan, and Lindsey Boyer did a fabulous job overseeing that. And it was great to link that to the forum because it was great to get other perspectives and ideas. So I just wanted to give a kudos to CWSD and our open space.
I think we should, I don't know, send some gracious thank you or something and recognize all of our art in this room and all the service that Sharon has done for us.
Yeah, perhaps we should do a little resolution for
Yeah, I think
And for Bruce, we've forgotten Bruce Henderson.
Yes.
I think both of them should be honored for the work they've done.
Okay, maybe we'll put something together. Is there anyone else? Well, when I'm at it. So we got Bruce and Sharon. Just really a lot of work in this room they've done for us. So, okay, Ms. Hicks?
Thank you, Stephanie Hicks, for the record. I know that members of the board recently had an opportunity to view our internal winter weather operations mapping, even though we have had a very light winter. But I wanted to report that that mapping was submitted to the MAPS 2024 National Geospatial Excellence and captured second place in the national competition. So congratulations to our asset management team.
Good job. Great job. Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay. Then I'm going to go to find a little public comment for the Board of Supervisors. Mr. French?
Denny French, Carson City. Thank you, Mayor. I can't, I won't go into the depth of my disappointment in the lack of further consideration on the turf. The different layers that you have deemed important are the turf and the infill. Whether or not you have materials to put on it that will not degrade your turf has not been studied, has not been looked into. Which infill would wear out your turf faster? Which infill would even poison children, perhaps? Thank you for the observation about the nut. I did include it in my comments and concerns also. So I don't know what to tell you. My understanding is that you all care about the environment, but none of your actions today have shown it to me in actual fact or in action. Even to delay this would have shown some consideration towards my concerns and those of others. I'm sorry that there's more, not more public here, but I've also noticed that more public doesn't necessarily change the positions that you take. I'd like to suggest that in meetings, that no matter what, there is a screen that you can see as a supervisor, as a member of a meeting, commissioner or whatever, that the public is also able to observe that on a screen. I've been to meetings where they have it on a laptop or they have it on someone's, whatever they call it, folder or a computer, but I can't see it, and it's often not also available in print. So I feel like the deaf person that doesn't have a translator at some of the meetings. I would like to make sure that if you can see it as a supervisor, I should today, as I did, have it on the screen so that the public in here can see it as well. And I'd like to also bring up the fact that this park situation has to be considered at more depth. These things are huge. We're going to have things come up that aren't having been looked at will have to be looked at after the fact. And so I want to encourage more study on all that was discussed today. And as far as the meeting situation for me, I have to rely on you to get information out to me. Now, I am also responsible then to look at that material either on print or on screen, and that's on me. But the rest, I feel, should be on you all. And I appreciate your efforts to communicate with me those materials and the fact that the supervisors have supplied me with Board of Supervisor agendas. Very thoughtful, very thoughtful. And the fact that they have one here every time so that public that didn't get one out for them can have exposure to it. Thank you very much.
Do I have any other public comment?
Hi, good morning. My name's Kelsey Penrose. For the record, I apologize in advance. This is my supervisor. She is not done training. I don't know how well this is going to go. But so I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board that recently the State of Nevada was sued and lost because they are not adequately providing behavioral health services for minors. And I didn't, after reading it, I didn't fully understand what that meant until last week. A child in my family had a mental health crisis that required them to be taken to Carson Tahoe Hospital. Carson Tahoe Hospital did an excellent job, but the issue is that if a child needs to be put on inpatient, if they're suicidal or psychotic or having some other sort of significant event, there is no option to hospitalize them anywhere in the region. So my family was told that even though this child was having suicidal ideation, suicidal threats, that we could either, my family could either hide our knives or put them on a plane to Vegas. And those are the only options. They can't even stay overnight at Carson Tahoe Hospital to be under observation. Those were the only options. And Carson Tahoe is aware of it, and they apologized profusely, but that's, that's it. That's the only option. And so obviously, my family did the steps that we needed to do without sending a minor child on a plane to Las Vegas. And on talking with the staff at Carson Tahoe, they said that Mallory is going to, they're looking into instituting something that would be able to house minors 12 and above. But that's kind of even worse a little bit because children younger than 12 would still have to be sent to Las Vegas for inpatient treatment, which is super scary and awful. So I would just like to ask that the board or the Board of Health just start looking into these things because the state is going to be required to rectify the situation. So I don't know if that means that more funding is going to be coming in or new statutes, but I would just really ask that, as everybody knows, behavioral health crises are increasing at all age ranges, but especially within youth, and the only option cannot be to send them to Las Vegas. And if every single county in the state is also sending their kids to Las Vegas, I can't imagine that Las Vegas has a lot of room open for the rest of us. And then I also just wanted to add as a nice thing, at the Reno City Council meeting last night, they were discussing their budget, and they could not fathom how Carson City has such a ratio of being able to retain staff compared to our population. And I'm pretty sure that we're the only municipality that is not having a significant million-dollar budget deficit going into 2026. So we're just better than everybody else. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. You were wonderful. She did a great job. Okay, do I have any other final public comment? Okay, then we will adjourn as the Board of Supervisors, and we'll come back as the Board of Health in 10 minutes as they all set up and switch chairs. New chair, new chair, everything. Thank you. Thank you.
And with that, I'll ask for a roll call.
Chair Lyons.
Here.
Vice Chair Giame.
Here.
Member Bagwell.
Here.
Member Furlong. Member Horton. Member Shutey.
Here.
Member White. We have a quorum.
Thank you. So to Action Item 19A, which is approval of minutes. Oh, gosh darn it. Thank you. So to the first item, 18, public comment. Do we have any public comment? Do we have any calling in for public comment? Okay, hearing no public comment, we'll move on to 19A. Possible action, approval of minutes from the last meeting of December 5th, 2024.
I move to approve the previously identified meeting minutes as presented.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Supervisor Horton, can you please press a button? I'm trying to do this thing. Okay, so yes, six, none opposed, and none abstained. Then I'd like to take out of order on the Health and Human Services Item 20C because we have our consultant here to present on the strategic plan. And Nikki, do you want to introduce him? This is Caleb.
So Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services, for the record. And we have Caleb Cage with us today from Arc Dome Strategies. And he is going to present our strategic plan to you all.
I have my neck flexibility for full spectrum here. So good morning, Chair Lyons, members of the board. My name is Caleb Cage. I am the principal at Arc Dome Strategies, a private consulting firm. Have met with all of you throughout the course of this. Very excited to be here this morning to present to you on the strategic plan that we wrote in conjunction with your team. I'll go through the presentation here. Would love to have any feedback that you all have. And, and we can, I'm happy to answer any questions as well. So just as a general overview of the strategic plan as it was written, this, this was written as a five-year strategic plan. And that's important to think about all of the different objectives and goals that are in here and, and how much time there is to, to achieve them. As you all know, the Carson City Health and Human Services is accredited by the Public Health Accreditation Body. And so this strategic plan was written in, was written in compliance with those requirements, which, which we'll get into really is just about making sure as many people as possible can have say and provide input. This process allowed us to gather candid input from everyone, from staff internally to governance, to elected officials and as well as external partners as well. And the request from the beginning, which I think you all will appreciate, is that we are, we were asked to make sure we were providing candid input on the strengths and weaknesses of the organization so that the goals and objectives could be meaningful and really address the real opportunity. There, there are two items on here. The next item is the, one of the outcomes was a proposed mission, vision, and core values. It's written as proposed because as an external group, there are two reasons for that. One is an external consultant. We can really only take the information we receive and propose something for the organization and for this board to approve. And second, until it's finalized through your approval process, they'll remain as, as proposed in here. Based on the SWOT analysis, we've developed goals and objectives based on all of the info we've received with the understanding again that this is a living document, that this is something that will be modified over the five years, that this document is, is in existence. And that'll be input internally, that'll be changes, whether there are changes to funding or changes to staffing or changes otherwise, that this can be, that this can be modified over time. And then lastly, as kind of mentioned before, it's 95% complete. This, this could be 100% complete, but we wanted to leave the door open for input from you and, and for Carson City Health and Human Services to really finalize it and make it their own, to decide, okay, this, we don't like these words in the mission statement, we'll change to these, those sorts of things. So that's, that's sort of an overview and happy to, I'm happy to take questions throughout, but I'll, I'll try to move quickly through this so there's plenty of time as well. So this graphic here is sort of a Gantt chart. It's sort of a, an outline of how we approached this. And met nearly weekly with members of your senior staff at Carson City Health and Human Services and went over this document and started again, three phases, define and design, preparation, collection, and analysis. And then finally finalize that analysis and conclude, which was to take place or which did take place from August to December. Again, meeting nearly weekly, we were able to, to go over this and assess where we stood in the process and, and, and what outcomes we were finding and make sure we were in regular and consistent conversation with your leadership. And I'm happy to say that we were able to stay, I think it's, I think I can say we were able to stay ahead of this timeline the whole time and, and finished this back in December with final, with a final presentation as the CCHHS staff. So, so this is sort of how we framed the project and the process. And on this slide, this, this really gets into those middle three months. The, the analysis portion where we were gathering data. We did a survey, an internal survey of all staff members, received significant response from that. We held two in-person town halls for Health and Human Services staff, key leader interviews, individual interviews within the department. We held an external partner town hall, so making sure we, we had input from state and local leaders on, on how CCHHS was doing and where there were opportunities for greater partnership, greater collaboration, and so on. And then in addition to that, as, as you all know, we sat down with the governing body individually and conducted in-person interviews and finally did a document review, right? We looked at Carson City's strategic plan. We looked at the previous strategic plan. We looked at all of the different pieces, the state public health strategic plan, to really identify where this needed to be going forward. And all of this data gathering over that really four or five-month period allowed us to get to a point where we could really analyze the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities and the threats, right? A standard SWOT model that allowed us to really identify what those priorities should be going forward. And as you can see, I won't go through these individually, but the strengths that kept coming up throughout all of these interviews are on this slide here. You see the five here where they are a strong desire to improve through collaboration, to protect its reputation, to protect the support it enjoys from this body through its communication and performance and so on. So, so these are, again, these came up through the survey, the internal interviews, governance body interviews, as well as the externals. Some of the weaknesses that were identified here, the ongoing staff turnover of positions within the agency was something that came up time and time again. And this is something that state agencies, government agencies, public agencies across the state and around the country are dealing with. The, the need to overcome internal communication. I've never done a SWOT analysis or an AAR in my various roles where communication did not come up as a key challenge. It's something that always needs to be focused on and is intentional. It needs to be intentional. And then something that came up quite often was this last bullet here, which was the, the perception or the identification that, of the mission creep that's going on, whether that's driven by grant funds and compliance with grant funds or other things. And really needing to make sure that CCHHS is really focused on its core mission and, and core responsibilities is determined by this body. Opportunities, this board and, and, and the Board of Supervisors and others have provided really incredible support, whether that's through including the position of a deputy director, including increased communication staff, the identification of the Health and All Policies initiative, as well as these other opportunities that are here, and, and really providing that roadmap for the way ahead. And then the threats that were identified in the process as well. Workforce challenges, again, one of the weaknesses. Isolate the challenges that result in lack of clarity of mission. Again, these, these relate directly to the weaknesses that were identified, as well as funding instability. It came up in most conversations of saying, okay, if we're this grant, this much of us is funded by, of our operations are funded by-- is funded by, of our operations are funded by grants, what do we know beyond this year and next year, if federal grants change? And I think we've seen some of those changes, or at least the signals that some of those changes are happening at the federal level. So, how much predictability do we have going forward? So, based on that SWOT analysis, we proposed these updated mission, vision, and core value statements for them. Again, I'm not going to read them for you, they're on the screen here, but they, these really came from the conversations we had with internal staff, with external staff, with external partners as well. I'd like to point out here that the core values here, there were five core values previously for CCHHS. I come from a military public safety model where subordinate agencies need to align with senior agencies. So, we adopted, or recommended the adopting of the three core values for Carson City and your strategic plan, so that there's real alignment between the city and its Health Department, through Carson City Health and Human Services as well. Our strategic goals that are proposed as a part of this plan, pardon me for being a little cute and making them all Cs, but having things that we can remember and rely on and reach back to, I think is really helpful. They are to clarify the mission role and responsibility, and offer and align services accordingly, convene local and regional service providers across all sectors, communicate internally, or, excuse me, externally, and then collaborate internally. Again, these were drawn specifically from the four elements of the SWOT analysis, and really trying to identify the greatest opportunity for the next five years. Each goal has objectives associated with them. When we sat down with key leaders, one of the things they said was, we want goals and objectives, but we want them to be measurable, we want them to be reportable back to the Board of Health, so we can assess these things. So, beyond the goals and objectives, there are measurable outcomes that are identified within the formal report as well. But you can see clarifying the CCHHS mission role and responsibilities, something that came up quite a bit in reference to mission creep, and really understanding what are our key goals and/or key roles and responsibilities as an organization. The best way to do that, at least in my opinion, is to conduct a systematic review of everything that is required, what it's required by, who else is providing those, and making sure that there's as minimal duplication of effort as well. And so, that's really in the first two, and then the goal, the third objective is to make sure that alignment exists, and that it is carried forward. Goal number two is to convene. This is really emphasizing the CCHHS's role as a leader, as a key convener locally, within public and private organizations that provide public health. You'll see this phrase, establish CCHHS as a central hub of coordination, something that came directly out of the interviews and the discussions we had. So that perhaps, with that landscape analysis and that assessment of the mission roles and responsibilities in the previous goal, perhaps CCHHS doesn't need to be the key service provider, but it can be a key coordinator of those service providers. And if people come in the front doors of the health authority here, then they can serve as a referral agency, or a coordinator with other agencies as well. The third goal is to communicate, again, something that came up time and time again, to make sure people know what public health does here within the community, within your jurisdiction, to make sure that those health outcomes are identified, that they are identified in ways that are measurable, and that they are communicated with local partners. But just as important, or and just as important, is coordinating with local business, philanthropy, other service organizations, and advocacy groups as well. Making sure that if there is a program that is underway, then the Main Street businesses here on Carson Street are fully aware of what's going on, and how the city is working to address needs here within the community, through Rotary, or through other engagement that exists out there. And, yes?
So, on that, to go back on the objective to the identify all aspects of public health services provided across city government, and like you just said, even service clubs, would this also include the school system?
So, it's Caleb Cage for the record, if I can respond directly to that. So, really, it's all of the service providers here. I know that there's a different governance structure, right, with the school board, than with the Board of Health. But there are certainly, there are certainly public health programs and resources that are provided through Carson City, through Carson City School District, so.
And where I'm coming, because this is my background, is I was a middle school health teacher. And so, I always loved collaboration, and I see this as an amazing opportunity to really strengthen, or look at, the ability to strengthen those relationships, or collaborative efforts, not only to reach more kids, but to create a more robust curriculum.
So, Caleb Cage, for the record, again, I think this certainly provides the opportunity for CCHHS to serve as that convener and that coordinator. It would be very much up to this board, as its governance body, to say, yes, Carson City School District, these are all of the partners in the area, right? You're in Carson City, you've got a lot of state government agencies that provide public health, not necessarily in Carson City, but around Carson City as well. You've got nonprofit organizations, you've got the Community Coalition, all kinds of different groups. And I think, were that the direction that this board wanted, the Carson City Health and Human Services to go, then it certainly could provide as the overarching convener for all of those groups that are providing services to the local community.
Great, thank you.
Finally, the last is goal number four, collaborate. And this is, this is one, really, the first three are external, right? Making sure that we're providing services to the external community. And collaborate was, as a goal, was really established to streamline internal communications and internal structures. We're only as good externally as we can be collaboratively internally. And so, these were some of the things that were identified as ways to increase that collaboration. So, creating a team member development model, so that when you have somebody come in at an entry-level position, how do we really work to develop, and train, and empower that individual to grow, so that we can keep their organizational experience and expertise? How do we develop, or the second objective is to develop a robust internal and interorganizational feedback and communication system, so that the epidemiology and the public health preparedness sections within the department are fully aware of what's going on, and really working to empower leaders internally, to make decisions that are appropriate for their level of accountability and authority. And all of these are intended to create an internal system of, and a culture of trust, efficiency, and support. So, that concludes my, our presentation here. Happy to answer any questions you might have, or address any feedback you might have.
I'll start with myself, actually, and then go to Supervisor Judy. So, I appreciated in the lengthier document that there was an actual task of doing community outreach to community groups, and to target eight of those annually. I think that's going to be very important in trying to elevate public health and Carson City Health and Human Services to that entity that should be thought of when thinking about anything health. Currently, in Carson City, if something health comes up, it's always addressed to the hospital, okay? And that is like such an acute and down-the-road place. It really should be coming to the public health, you know, at a broader level. And I think getting that information out to the public, and saying who we are, what we do, what we can help with, and the whole convening aspect of the public health, quote, "department," I think is going to be very important in that regard. Another task that was put into the lengthier report was that they would, that the department would convene with community members quarterly, and have an annual summit. I think quarterly might be a little bit much, when you're talking about trying to bring together as many organizations as you're trying to bring together, and the big ones being, yes, the hospital, the Health Department, the School District, and probably, if we could get them to the table, Sierra Nevada Health Centers. I mean, they're crucial in our community. And that might even include some of our private providers, but not always thinking of the doctors in the hospital. Public health is way bigger than that, and we have a lot more we can do to prevent it ever getting to the hospital. So, those are some things that I wanted to point out here. And then, in regards to doing the landscape analysis, I want to point out that NACO has done a tremendous job in that regard throughout the state, but certainly, we could start with the report that they have done and provided to Carson City, because they've done a lot of analysis of what's available and where it's available, and it's not always through the Health Department. And I like the idea of philanthropy. It would be great if Carson City Health and Human Services had a foundation. So, when people thought of public health and wanted to help out, that foundation would be available, and that could be our uncategorical dollars that allow us to pivot when the next earthquake happens, when the next fire happens, when the next, you know, outbreak of measles happens, okay? We don't have any dollars on which to pivot. You know, everything's already assigned and categorized. So, those are my comments, and Caleb, really appreciate your work. Thank you. Supervisor Judy?
Thank you, thank you. And yeah, this is a great report. This piggybacks a little bit on what Dr. Lyons said, and so, I'm looking at the threats. The second one, Carson City Health and Human Services needs to prevent becoming irrelevant to the community as service needs evolve and expand. And really, what you said, Dr. Lyons, I think ties in. Instead of having the default as CTH, that really, Health and Human Services, like, what is our role? And so, but I was also thinking in terms of, is this why perhaps there's some mission creep? So that there's not an irrelevancy, you know? So, that was just a thought that came to mind. So, in terms of not becoming irrelevant, I think it would be important that we really revisit key roles, and the why behind each role. What is the why behind Health and Human Services? And kind of come back to that from time to time, to really make sure that we are meeting the needs as they are today, and staying current in what is required of a community Health and Human Services. Because our relevance really does hit all four goals. And, you know, what is our mission? And so, to be very clear on that, how can we collaborate between all the sectors? How is it best to communicate? Which really brought up my whole conversation about the School District as well, you know, just to add that to the conversation, and then that ultimate collaboration. So, this is great food for thought, and I love the direction it's going, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Anything further about the?
I'll just raise my hand.
Okay, Mayor Bagwell.
I never raised the hand. So, I do want to just say, I really appreciate that alignment that goes along with the city processes for what we're doing, so that we're now seeing symmetry across all our departments, right? That we have goals, objectives, tactics, that you are holding yourself accountable to a year-by-year roadmap, right? I think that's so imperative to be able to see success, and to force yourself to do the tasks. Because if we don't write it down and say, I'm going to do such-and-such by this date, I don't even call that mission creep, I just think things get away from you, and you end up not addressing it at all, because there's always so much to do. So, I really like the format, and that you're trying to address what you're supposed to be doing in the community. So, for me, that's the most important element. Why are we here, and what do we do, and how are we going to do it? So, well done on the structure and working through the processes. I look forward to really studying the tactics, to see if you really think we can achieve those by the years that you have listed on there. I want to make sure, push yourself to the absolute max, but try not to deflate yourself the following year. If you get there and go, oh, we didn't hit three of them, so, good job.
And I will say, if I may, Caleb Cage, for the record, the easy part is writing this, to your point, Mayor, is the implementation is going to be challenging, and this was a great pleasure to get to know your team here. You have an exceptional Health and Human Services team, and I know they take a lot of pride in the work they do for your community. So, thank you for the opportunity and the feedback as well.
So, any further comments about the getting down into the weeds part? No? Okay, great, excellent. Thank you, Caleb. You must write really, really well. So, on the next item is 28. This is for possible action, and this is the Director's Report from Nikki Aker.
For the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. So, on the strategic plan, one thing that I did want to bring up is, this is going to be coming back to you all in June for approval, or acceptance, however, whatever we did last time.
So, if we have suggestions, get them to you by the end of this month, maybe, so you can incorporate them?
Yes, please.
Sounds good.
Okay, so, this is, like Dr. Lyons said, my Director's Report. Some highlights here, you have the report in front of you, I'm just going to talk about some specifics within the report, but are hard-to-recruit positions, we're still looking for that Environmental Health Manager. As we know, it's a challenging position to recruit and hire, and so, still looking for that. I want to welcome Toni Orr, and she's here. She's our Clinical Services Division Manager. Toni has been with us in different aspects. She worked in the tobacco program, and then helped us through COVID. She left the organization, came back as our public health nurse, and is now our Division Manager. So, we're very pleased to have her, and she's doing an awesome job. A highlight that I want to bring up is our congenital syphilis prevention. Looking back at 2024, our Epi staff, they were able to coordinate care for four pregnant individuals, and that's within our surveillance area, which is individuals, and that's within our surveillance area, which is Carson, Douglas, and Lyon. And, you know, again, those diseases, they don't know boundaries, and it ends up having, it can end up taxing our local hospital with some of this. But so appropriate treatment was given, preventing four congenital syphilis cases. So awesome work there. And our CCHHS and the community agency staff participated in 51 outreach events for flu and COVID, and 25 of those were held in Carson City. Future Board of Health items, and some of this comes out of that strategic plan, is a comprehensive report listing all services and source of requirement for input and support from the Board of Health. That comes out of that strategic plan. And this next one has been a request of you all, is a report of collaboration of nonprofits who received ARPA funding, so that will be coming to you. Our community health needs assessment data update. And then, of course, always willing to take other requests if you have any at this time, or of course, you can email and let us know as well.
Nikki, I would just point out that from our last meeting, we had discussed putting a letter forward to our federal representatives about stimulant drug abuse, and that will also be addressed at the next meeting.
At the next meeting. We have the draft letter that we'll be looking at. So I just wanted to go through, again, you have the report in front of you, but just highlight some different things that are happening within the divisions. Clinical services, I want to point out that we get site visits all the time from our grantors. And we had a recent site visit from the Nevada State Immunization Program, and that's from the state. And they were very impressed of the leadership provided by Jeannie Freeman on that grant. Jeannie was stepped in and took over some of the oversight of grants and that. While we were looking for a clinical services division manager, the fiscal support by Bretta Inman, my department business manager, and the grant work that was completed by, she goes by Vannett, and they called our program a model program. So that was direct input from the state. And within the report that we gave you, you've got some pictures. We have worked to improve the aesthetics of our lobby, but you don't see the pictures of the lobby, but you do, well, this is the lobby of the clinic, and also looking at the clinic rooms and putting a new little kids section in there. We do have a kids section in our main lobby as well. So if you haven't seen that, stop by. So we're taking steps to make our, our health department more aesthetic and pleasing to our kids that come in as well. We've also take, have taken steps. We used to be closed during lunch. We no longer are closed during lunch for the clinic, and so we've staggered staff, and we realized that during lunch may be an only time for individuals to come in and get services. So we are now open all day long for our patients. And one of our public health nurses did homebound flu and COVID vaccinations, and that was in collaboration with the Mills on Will's program. So we were happy to have that collaboration, and Judy Barlow went out and did 35 visits and vaccinated 37 individuals, 33 for flu, and 30 COVID vaccinations were given. So and in my chronic disease prevention and health promotion division, clinic, that staff participated in three community outreach events, and they reached through those 1,234 parents or adults and 2,281 youth. So as you can see, our programs are hitting a lot of individuals. Then we hosted presentations and tours for the high school freshman students. This is something that's been going on for a while. So the students walk over to the health department, they learn about what services we provide, so it's throughout the whole agency, and then they get a tour of the clinic. And so hopefully, it's not looking so scary when they come in or refer their parents or friends to come and see us. And this go-around, we had 223 students come through. Then for our adolescent health program, we, we are in the school. We do go to Carson High for that program, along with other agencies throughout the region. And in 2024, there were 357 participants that completed the program. So they do have a requirement of how to complete the program. So you'll see in the report that there was a total of 398 participants, but 357 completed the program. And some of that happens because we are in some of the juvenile detention centers, and that just happens because of how their movement happens within those centers. And then I want to bring attention to our 5210 program. And this is something we can all think about in our daily lives. This is a program that we receive a small amount of funding to do this. It's about $9,000 a year, but we're getting the word out that, so it's five or more fruits and vegetables in a day, two hours or less of recreational screen time. So that means the phones, the iPads, TV, one or more hours of physical activity, and zero sugary drinks. So that's our 5210 program, and we can all take that advice and work towards that.
We have some questions or comments. Supervisor Judy?
Well, I actually, I just wanted to thank you, you know, with the getting into the juvenile detention, because that is so important, and that, you know, that, that falls under that, the umbrella of the outreach in the schools, and so thank you. And then I had another question, and it has disappeared.
Okay. Mayor Bagwell?
So Nikki, I wanted to homine a little bit on the public comment we received this morning that, that dealt with mental health.
Facilities for our youth. And so I'm really interested in Ms. Penrose's comment that the hospital won't even keep them overnight if there's a critical incident that that's occurring. And I'd really like to dive into that a little bit more for an understanding and what our behavioral health task force is looking at, and is that accurate? It's take your, lock up everything in your home that they could take their own life with, or take them to Las Vegas? Is that truly the only choices that families have?
I'd like to address that. So in conversations with Kitty McKay regarding their new outreach program, which I forget the name of, Jump or Clear, I can't remember.
Alive, I think, is.
Alive, is that they were having trouble with having, having pediatric patients on hold in the hospital. So I don't know if on this particular time, they were already stuffed and so couldn't, literally didn't have another bed to put a child into. But I'm not aware that they can't.
Can't have one, at all.
Yeah, at all.
Two different things.
But it's something we do need to clarify, because a part of the reason that they're looking at opening up those beds to stabilize is because they're trying, they're overstuffed with that in the standard pediatric admission beds, which are normally thought of as being for medical conditions, not mental health conditions. And Supervisor Giomi?
I just wanted to mention a couple of things. One, Washoe County Commissioner Clara Andriola is spearheading an effort, I know, in Washoe County to get their, the formal, the former inpatient behavioral health facility opened again. I don't know what the status of that is, but I asked her.
West Hills?
It was West Hills, but the county acquired the building. So the county purchased the old West Hills building. I don't know what they're calling it, is my point. So, but yes. And I, I don't, I don't know specifically if they were going to have any sort of pediatric component to that, but I did encourage her to have her staff reach out to you and see if there's an opportunity for collaboration there as they bring that forward, because there's no one here who doesn't think, or who thinks we have enough behavioral health capacity in our community. So anything we can do at our level to help or participate in that, or, or find a way to get people there. I have a very good family friend whose son has a behavioral health problem that led to criminal activity. And this young person is not an adult, has bounced to four or five different facilities in Nevada, just as an example to highlight what Kelsey said. From Elko, Carlin, to Vegas, back to Carson, they've tried to find places for him as far away as Minnesota, Southern California. And it, there's not just a dearth of care for adolescents here or pediatricus. It is a nationwide issue. And I, you know, personally suspect that a lot of it has to do with social media, but that, that gets us down a completely different path. But anyway, I, you know, it's, we, we will not solve this problem ourselves. You know, my goal, like with so much of this, is that we collaborate with partners who can help us provide what we need to, to the extent we can to our kids. And I'll just say, if, if, if the only place they can go is Las Vegas, I would say yay, because there's at least a place. Because there are some places, or there are some youth who have no place to go. So, you know, I, we shouldn't discount anything, whether it's in Las Vegas or Timbuktu, you know.
And I have heard of juveniles that have had to go out of state for treatment.
With this individual, he, that isn't even an option. It is very likely that this individual will end up being an adult criminal. And it's going to cost us all in the long run. And that's one example that I'm very familiar with. There, there have got to be, I mean, if we had Ally in here, she would, she would tell us how many of them there are. We have, we have Kenny, who could probably, but anyway.
And I would give a shout out, from my understanding at the Behavioral Health Task Force to the school district, that they've started, you know, with their programs, and I forget what they call them off the top of my head right now, but even in the elementary school and the middle schools, in terms of just, you know, emotional regulation and support and behavioral, you know, regulation and support. So, and that they have bilingual counseling and opportunities and things like that for kids in schools. So our school district is really out there on the front on this, and whatever support that we can provide to them to, for instance, their kento vento program.
McKenny Vento.
Oh, Kenny Vento program. Just read in the newspaper, as probably many, many of you had, that they've already provided this year, to date this year, as many services as they provided all of last year. So, you know, it's just increasing, and I think economic things being a little scary going forward into the latter part of this year, we might see more.
And I'll just comment on the project in Washoe County. Julia Ratty, which I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with, was hired for that behavioral health piece. And she is one that definitely is in favor of collaboration. So I've been waiting for her to kind of get her feet on the ground a little bit, but there will be some conversations with Julia as well. So I want to report for the Tobacco Control and Prevention Program. As far we're going back, you know, into the schools, doing our tobacco prevention presentations, but with the SB 118 money, we're using some of that to bring back in the vaping presentation. And then with another grant that we obtained for opioid prevention, it will also address opioids. So it will be a more encompassing presentation to those students. And under environmental health, I want to point your attention to the mosquito abatement. As you can see, the number of hours for 2024 are doubled, the number of hours for 2023, and four times as much from 2022. This is, and you all approved that grant from the CDC for the public infrastructure for a part-time vector control person. We have that person on board. He is very enthusiastic. He is a student at UNR and is doing wonderful things for us. He's researching innovative ways to reduce our costs for surveillance. Surveillance is an important piece of vector control. And he's utilizing mushrooms for CO2 production in surveillance traps instead of dry ice. So really looking at different ways to run the program. And you'll see also in the report that I've included the mosquito treatment decision criteria, and so you'll be hearing more about our mosquito abatement. And then for our Epi services, and I guess I left them out, but you can see that for 2024, our hospitalizations for influenza is, has been high, 127 compared to 42 in 2023. And basically, what I can say to this is make sure you get your flu shot, wash your hands, and stay home when you're sick. So we are in a pretty high respiratory season right now. I also want to point out that the epidemiology division manager, Dustin Booth, he continues to assist with environmental health, since we're still looking for that right person to join our agency. So, and he's also assisting and training the new part-time vector control technician. So Dustin's got a lot of knowledge, and.
I'll point out that our director, deputy, I mean, not deputy, but our director has also been helping out that division with the human resource component of that, which with a lot of people can be a lot of work.
Okay, going on to human services, in 2024, our staff served 1,400 residents, or 660 households, and there's a whole list of services that were provided. So, and some of it's with grant funding and some with general assistance. And we're going to talk more on a different item about our street outreach, so I'll leave all that for that discussion. But, you know, what has led to our. discussion. But, you know, what has led to our street outreach is really having a focus and discussion on our homeless, and it's been with the city, business, community, and our residents. So, we'll talk more about that. So, what do you look forward to for 2025 with our Behavioral Health Task Force? In our community, there's a number of different resources for behavioral health, and just different resources that individuals, agencies put out. And we're looking at all of those. We're not gonna recreate the will, but we will have a central area where individuals can access those resource guides. And we're working through that with our task force right now. And for public health preparedness, that was the division that oversaw those flu and COVID vaccination events that I reported before. And they are, have staff that are leading the mass casualty, mash, excuse me, mass casualty incident plan development as well. And overall, for administration, the challenges, you know, grants are very challenging right now. We're not sure where the pieces are gonna fall from all this. But, you know, some of our grants, because of what's happening, are resulting in delays, or maybe elimination of some funds. So, you know, we are really paying attention to that. And then, of course, our vacancy of some of, you know, a key position, the Environmental Health Division Manager, it has created challenges, but, you know, we, we work through it. And then, lastly, I would just say that, so, this will be my last Board of Health meeting. I am retiring May 29. My retirement letter is forthcoming. It's been a wonderful experience. It's been a different experience. I'm so grateful to the staff that are at CCHHS. They, you know, they make the director's job a lot easier. But with that, as you all, most of you know, behavioral health is a big passion of mine. You know, I have it in my own family, so that's not something that I'm done with. I will continue looking at options of what Carson City can do, what we can do as residents of Carson City, but, and I want to thank all of you. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I don't have a flag. I just want to congratulate you on your retirement. Nikki, you've done an outstanding job under some very, very unexpected severe circumstances over your career, especially in the recent history. And, and you've persevered so well, as long as, as well as the rest of your, your team. So I just want to thank you and congratulate you, Nikki.
Can I just add my congratulations, Nikki? I, you know, I know it's a hard decision to, to decide to retire and hang up what you've done. But, you know, you leave the place in good hands. You've brought good people in. You've worked well with them. You've trained them well. And you will have left this Quad County in a better position than when you started. And that's all anybody can ask for. So, congratulations and thank you.
Yes, congratulations. Well, I haven't had, when you say more fishing, I haven't had fishing in my background. And I'm not committing to anything at this point, other than working on the behavioral health, so.
I would say Nikki has been a tremendous asset nationally and statewide as well, not just here in Carson City. She's held some positions with public health and with the Nursing Association. And so, she has been a tremendous asset all the way around. So, thank you, Nikki. So, I have more comments on your current position, since you haven't left it yet. About your report, I wanted to point out that I also attended this de-escalation training that was given as an all-staff training. It was an hour long. It was very good, and I was glad to see it provided. So, when you have that person who is screaming at you, when isn't able to hear what you're saying, how do you work with that? So, that was provided for all the staff, and it was very good training that was provided. And then I wanted to ask, in regards, in regards to the chronic disease outreach prevention, the Bunanza was really a great event for that outreach. And I'm wondering, does, do, does this department participate in the senior celebration? Because that has a tremendous number of seniors who participate in that every year.
At this point, I don't believe we have, but that's always something that we can look at.
Yeah, so, and I think that's held in May. Does April, May, it's in, it's in there? And then a couple other things here.
Someone will look at it.
I'm here, Tom May, in May. So you're, as Board of Supervisors, you still will see me.
And these programs that are targeted for fifth graders, have we been able to provide any of those? We've gotten down to middle school. We've gotten to high school and juvenile detention type. But have we been able to provide anything down to that level?
This is Susie Talavera for the record, and to Dr. Lyons. Yes, we have been able to provide some as of February 20. We had our first school in Seelager. And then we're still in communications with the chief nurse to schedule the remainder of the elementary schools at this point. So we are.
Excellent, thank you. And then I wanted to say that when you were able to get into, I think it was the middle school, two different middle schools, you were really able to have quite a few students participate. So, excellent. And then in regards to the obesity thing, the more you can emphasize or reemphasize the 5210, because at least that's being put out already, you know, sort of reemphasize that, instead of trying to get into the weeds about dealing with it one-on-one. And tobacco, we, it is a big issue. And so, on page 11 here, remains the leading cause of preventable death and disease in the U.S., killing more than AIDS, alcohol, car accidents, illegal drugs, murders, and suicides combined. So, our work in trying to do that tobacco prevention, whether it's vaping, or cigarettes, or otherwise, with youth is so critical. Because if we can keep people away from that, those products until 21, there's a marked diminishing in their ever taking up as a lifetime. So, excellent on that. And I did not understand what it meant on, all grants are flat-funded.
So, basically, when we say grants are flat-funded, that means that there's been no increase.
Okay.
So it doesn't, and what happens when a grant is flat-funded, then as our wages increase, then something else has to decrease. And usually, that's our operating. So, if you've got a grant, in fact, we've got one grant now, that our operating is very minimal. And it basically is all salaries. So it gets hard to do your program without any type of operating.
Thank you. And then further on the Epi Division, want to point out that the reportable conditions in 2024 increased by 40%. And that division's having trouble with funding, a lot of different funding sources have been cut. And so we just noticed that since 2023, the number of cases has gone up 40%. So, we're gonna be looking at the, likely in the near future, about how do we continue to fund our essential programs, tasks, and that sort of thing. And also would emphasize what Nikki already pointed out, the number of hospitalizations for influenza was significant this season. At another data point, was about approximately 90% of those people who were hospitalized. And there's different ways to look at that data, but regardless, 90% of those that were hospitalized were unvaccinated. So, one of the biggest things about the vaccine, just as it is with the COVID vaccine, is it helps, it doesn't necessarily prevent infection, but it does markedly decrease the risk of having to be hospitalized for the illness. The same goes with RSV, especially in adults. Thankfully, one of the other data points, if I've got this correct, is that our COVID has gone down about 50% this year from last year. And it's down about 25% over the last four years. So thankfully, COVID is less problematic, or at least this year it was. And then, on the overall budget, so general funds are 51%, grant funds are 49%. These are CDC infrastructure grants, so this is on page 23. And the variety of different things that have been, in terms of infrastructure from the CDC, which presently is under attack on its funding, are our administrative assistant, which has been crucial, I think, for both the director and deputy director, in terms of getting that communication out to the staff at the Health Department, and helping them, free them up to do those higher-level functions for which they're trained and experienced. And then our Chronic Disease Division Manager, Susie, who just spoke to you, the clinical, clinical service supervisor, a very important position, that's been able to free up our clinic manager from some of those administrative duties. The clinic manager needs to be an RN. And this office supervisor, of course, doesn't need to have any kind of licensing, but markedly increases your, what you can get from your RN. Wouldn't you agree, Tony?
Yes.
And the Public Health Communications Specialist, to get this information out there, 60% funded from the CDC. One of our public health nurses, and then our vector control technician. So, any influence you have with our federal representatives in regards to maintaining that CDC core infrastructure, I mean, this is one of the things that hit us with the COVID pandemic, which, the last time I looked, I think it was a $4 trillion impact to our economy, was that we weren't ready. We were downscaled. We were running skinny, very, very skinny. And it was problematic when something big happened. So, we really need that public health workforce, which has been diminishing over decades. And now we're trying to upscale it, and as soon as we get it upscaled, then we're gonna start chopping heads. So, those are my comments. Anybody else have any comments? I talk a lot. Okay, thank you. So, I'll entertain a motion to accept the director's report?
I move to accept the director's report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously? Okay, on to item 20B, the Health Officer Report. And for once, I don't have a whole lot to say on it. Just included those two flyers relative to general public health information. Are there any questions or comments regarding my Health Officer Report? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I'll move to accept the report as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. And then on to item number 20D. This is for discussion only, the Carson City Street Outreach Program. And Nikki, I'll, I'll let you proceed.
Thank you. For the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services. So, I'm gonna go over different statistics with you, what our street outreach person, specialist has been doing. And I'll even introduce her. So, we've got the Carson Karma Core, is what we call it. That's our street outreach program. It was implemented February 21, 2024. Listed on the screen up here is the contract scope of work. And we'll talk more about some of this as we go on. I just want to highlight here the collaboration with MOST and our street outreach and CCHHS. There's very good collaboration that happens. I want to put a shout out to MOST. MOST is a, a team that we reach out to a lot. I think that the makeup of our MOST teams here in Carson is a awesome makeup. It makes a lot of sense. A lot of the, MOST teams do not have the same makeup that we do, but they're very effective, and I value them greatly. So, who are our homeless in Carson City? So this is just the age breakdown of the individuals what, of, that have come to us at CCHHS. So these are, you're gonna see different numbers in different places, but these are the individuals that our street outreach program has intersected with. And they, these individuals have come to our agency for services. As you are well aware, sometimes it takes many different touches on a person before they're ready to come for services. And so, you know, our street outreach person may see an individual 10 times before they even come to us. Some, and you'll see with this, some of our individuals don't want to answer. There's got to be a lot of trust that's built, and before they even get a name, they even get an age.
Nikki, we have a question. Mayor Bagwell?
So, Nikki, looking at all of the slides, and I really appreciate that we're starting to get data points for all of us to be able to start measuring and seeing success. Can I ask that, for instance, when I look at who are the homeless in Carson City, can you add a total? So, all, all bar graphs, charts, please put the totals in there, so I don't have to resort to the old calculator standard math. So, in this one, I look at it and say, we had 75 clients. But I need just a little bit more clarity. So, we have, it's Summer, right? Okay, so we have Summer that's out in the field, and she'll encounter a homeless individual in our street outreach project. Is she entering into the database these questions, or do they have to come in, where she's writing them down and you're entering them? I'm trying to make sure I understand the scope of the 75 clients, because when I look at your other charts, things just aren't matching up. So I'm trying to understand, is it a one-to-many? I need a little more depth around these numbers, but great start.
So, for this, then, my understanding So for this, then, my understanding is we're entering this. And Summer is getting, she's getting, starting to be able to enter into.
She'll be able to do it in the field soon?
Yes, yes.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah.
That'll be even better.
So, and yes, this is Summer. Summer is doing a wonderful job out there. She's very familiar with Carson City. What is very unique and helpful with this position is she has lived experience. So she understands what these individuals are going through and has been through it herself. And I will also point out that this date range is from the implementation of the contract to the end of January. So.
Yeah, that was great. Again, the dates were wonderful. I'm just, I was just trying to ascertain if this was information that was, because you said an individual came in, and I'm going to assume that many that she originally touches don't, the objective is to get them in, but they don't come in for a while. And so I'm really trying to.
Perhaps just identifying what this slide, who, maybe just a definition.
Yeah.
Like, as the mayor said, did they actually come in, or is it that Summer contacted them and assisted them in the field?
So these are the individuals that came in for services.
Into the building?
Yes.
In building.
Yep. Has come to Human Services for services. And that's what this is going to be for the next couple of slides.
All of it's just in the Health Department?
Yeah, and I'll explain, I will explain when that changes.
Okay.
And, and I also will caveat this with, these are self-reported.
Sure.
So, and when I say that, you'll understand why I'm saying self-reported, some of the questions that we ask. So this is a breakdown of the men, women, and transgender that have self-reported, that have come in for services. So as you can see, nearly 63% are men. And here, this is the race in ethnicity, and as you can see, 73% are white. And again, self-reported.
Well, unless you're doing DNA, that's, that's the only way you're going to get that.
Exactly. And also, this is who is disabled that has come for services. So 48% have identified as being disabled. And HOH is head of household. And here, our developmental disability.
You can go back to that, sorry, just, I was trying to understand that, because you confused me with the head of household. So this, those could be, those could be juveniles? Is that what that's implying, that are the head of household, but they're not adults? What is, what, what are you saying here?
You know how that, go ahead. I brought my subject manager expert here with me.
Kristy Contreras, Carson City Health and Human Services, for the record. The head of household is, it is the person applying on behalf of the family unit. So if I were to go apply for my family, I would be considered the head of household. And that would be counting whether or not I had a disability. So that is just for the head of household. If it's a single person, it is for that individual. If it is a family, it is for the adult applying.
So they're not technically homeless?
Not the whole family.
I'm not understanding this slide, sorry. I mean, I, I guess when you, these are people asking for help that are disabled. Why does it matter if they're adults or head of household? Why do we have to call that out? And how does that affect the numbers?
It doesn't affect the numbers. That's just how many of the individuals applying. This specific slide comes from a report from our database. So that adult head of household information is on there. That is for the applicant. So that's how many of our homeless individuals who have applied for assistance are disabled.
But not necessarily all the disabled in the family unit.
Correct.
That's applying, only the head of household.
Correct.
So there could be more disabled children or something that this just is only capturing that head of household applicant.
Okay, so you're, okay. So if there's a family that has five people, and two of them have a disability, you're only capturing one of those two. Okay, thank you. That, that, that makes sense. Thank you.
Can we pull a report that shows? I mean, this is a canned report that already exists, but could we build one that actually gives us the disabilities in its entirety? Like you said, so if I had two in the family, it would report? So I could see that versus head of household?
So Kristy's indicating that, yes, we can.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that would be more valuable to have the full breadth of, of the disabilities that we're serving versus just whether they're head of household. I don't know how significant that is for us to know.
And this, next one is the developmental disability. 83% indicated no. And again.
Self-reported.
Yeah, yep. And also physical disability. And about 67% indicated no.
So that's, that's the one we just asked you to do, right?
No, this is, again, it's not the entire family of what you asked.
It's page two of the first one.
Okay. I didn't see where it says head of household on here.
Right.
And this is, again, self-reporting if they have a chronic health condition. And 61% indicated no.
Can I ask another question and a follow-up? So while all of this is self-reported, my question becomes if, so somebody comes in in a wheelchair, and they say, I don't have any disabilities, yet you recognize it because they're right there with their disability on display, is there anything where it's employee-reported for information within the database? Or there are no elements in which you, as the employee or the interviewer, mark or indicate?
Kristy Contreras, again, Carson City Health and Human Services. We can do observational. So we have many different circumstances where clients do not feel they have a disability. People who are hearing impaired aren't disabled, that's how their life is.
Right, so they don't take it that way.
So we do, and where it's necessary in working with certain programs, where we need them to also be on board with it, we do try to have that conversation, but we can do observational. There, there are a lot of circumstances that's necessary.
Well, we want to be able to get them the right services, and if you're only using self-reported, I guess we don't have people that need help. Or 67% of them don't need it anyway. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to switch gears here and talk about the encampment cleanup. So these are individuals that our street outreach program has worked with, and they get individuals to help with different cleanups. This is a collaboration with the sheriff's office and the street outreach program. So you can see, we had a lot happening in the first five months. We're, we're getting this back, going again. No cleanups were done in September, November, and December. That was due to staff turnover. One thing, when we have individuals help with cleanup, we do give gift cards as payment. And those are gift cards that are usually to a local grocery store. And right now, with some of our grant funding that we haven't received yet, we're not able to get those gift cards. And so I'm looking at other funding sources, and Karma Box just recently has indicated that they're going to be looking for some donations. And Summer is willing to go out and look for donations, and that's on behalf of Karma Box.
Can I ask a question on this slide? So I really want to talk about the encampment cleanups and have an understanding of how they work, and are we on the right track, wrong track? We're hitting all cylinders, or we will be? So the volunteers that you're going to, let's start differently. I got a better idea in my mind. So the sheriff's office may notice an area that could utilize a cleanup. They are going to then contact Summer and, and you guys and say, hey, no? I kind of like to understand how we get the encampment cleanups, what notifies us, what's the process that we're using on them? Because, you know, we, anyway, how does it work?
Kristy Contreras, Carson City Health and Human Services. So there is an aspect that we partner with the sheriff's department. They take an inmate crew out to do cleanups. We join along with them and do cleanups in some areas. There are some areas you need permission to, it's not your property, go clean up. And you would think that people would be happy you're picking up the trash, but that's not always the case. So that keeps us kind of on steady ground there, where we're not overstepping and going onto people's private property. But we get our volunteer individuals to go out. Occasionally, the sheriff's department isn't able to bring inmates out, so then we will do our own cleanups in areas where we have already cleared to be or that are on public property.
So if a public, I guess what I'm after is if the public notices an area that's, could, could certainly qualify for a cleanup, what's the process for them to notify, identify? Is that they call the sheriff's office to say, hey, can somebody come and clean up alley XYZ? I'm really looking for how we have public involvement, because when we started this entire process, that was a piece of it, right? Is that we had businesses and things that were individuals continually having to clean up from the impacts of homelessness. And so I'm just wondering if we've got that ironed out and how they know how to access those services. That's what I'm after.
And that is with the street outreach, going out and doing the outreach to the businesses, those businesses, that's where we get most of our locations. Those businesses contact street outreach directly. There's a Chevron that suffers a lot of impact. And so, you know, they, they reach out to us, and then if it's on their property, then we have their permission. And if not, and we need to get that permission, we will. But that's where most of our cleanups are coming from, if they're not in conjunction with the sheriff's department.
So we anticipate seeing these numbers come back up into, okay, because it was certainly a piece that we all approved, was to have that community presence for our businesses and, and things. And so, thank you.
And when Summer first started in December, she spent many days going out and connecting with the businesses and giving her business card and.
Supervisor Judy?
Oh, thank you. And so, but currently, at the moment, there's, there aren't a lot of businesses calling at this time. It's, is it pretty quiet?
You may as well just stay over there.
And thank you for what you do, Summer. You're amazing.
Good morning, everybody. Summer Jacobs, Karma Core Street Outreach. You're good. Is it on? Okay. We're looking forward to more collaboration with the businesses. As she said, I, I do, I did go around my first few days, just to the businesses, to give my card out there and let them know what I was doing out there and who I was, and that I did know a lot of the people and a lot of the homeless, and that we were working with them. And if they ever needed to clean up, if something was going on, that maybe we could come out and clean up. And so we have gotten a call from a few of them, but when we, when there isn't a place to clean up, I usually, I'm going to say about 100% of the time, I will call the sheriff's department, we work with John Haggard, and ask him, what is a good place to clean up that people have been complaining about or what have you? And he usually, 100% of the time, will say, yes, there's a place over there off Maverick, or Maverick, or here and there. Would you, you know, come out? And he does do the dump for us, so we leave the bags and they take it out for us. And so that collaboration has been awesome.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
I was just going to say, might also be some opportunities to collaborate with parks and rec. Maybe you've done that. But if not, that seems like a natural fit, because I think a lot of unhoused folks are using our centralized parks, and I think there's, they would benefit from some cleanup and having some people in the park to talk to those folks. You know, I think it's a good opportunity for you to meet them. Not that you haven't, but, but it's another place, I think.
Nikki, can I get on the city's website, the HHS or the city in general, and report a homeless encampment? Is there a way to do that? Is there a mechanism?
Carson Connect.
That's one.
Oh, they connect, yeah. Through there, they can, yeah.
And then they get responded to within the 24 hours, so. Good thing to put out there, Curtis.
So perhaps we can even make that connection a little bit better from our website.
A link to it.
That this is where you report that. Okay, so this is where your, the data is going to change. So on the next six slides, these are the, a result of questions being asked. We've changed some of the questions that we've asked based on information you all wanted. And in different meetings that we've attended and that of, you know, how can we gather more information to find out who these individuals are, where they're coming from, and that. So the information received here are from a variety of agencies that have reported information to us, and those agencies are individual agencies that received ARPA funding. So we have asked any of the agencies that received Carson City ARPA funding would gather this information from anybody that they were serving. And so as you can see here, where did you stay last night? And the majority of them said it was relatives, friend's house, or the Sunrise House, that is our collaboration with the courts, or transitional housing. And you're going to see the total number of responses are, they're not the same on each slide. That just depends on, you know, these other agencies, how many have they been able to contact and get these questions answered?
And whether they answer them, I suspect.
Right.
I mean, they might want to answer.
Correct. So also, where were you staying last week? As you can see, the majority relatives are a friend's house or outside on the streets. And again, this is data from all the different agencies. And then you can see here, from 161 responses to 120, again, it's if they're willing to answer the question.
Nikki, can I ask just a real quick question? Nights off the streets is seasonal.
Mm-hmm.
So that's really just a spot period on the calendar?
Correct. Yep. But it also gives us an idea of how many are staying there that we're having contact or the agencies are having contact with. And then what brought you to Carson City? We've got 31% that said family and friends. 14% were a nice area relocation. So this.
We'd like that to go to zero.
And 19%, they've lived here. So this just gives us a sense of why they came. And you can see 3% released from the prison. We have a state prison here in Carson City and we do know that some of those individuals end up staying. How long have you been in Carson City? So 40% said years. 27% said months. So those are our majority of the individuals. And this, the graph has just changed. It's still the same. We're getting the data the same way. Where was the last place you lived? And 45 of those individuals said Carson City. And we can also pull this in the percentage of how we were doing the other, but it gives you a sense of those total number. And that was 137 responses. And why are you experiencing homelessness? 29 of the 121 said no job. Next is not enough money. Next, we've got eviction. And next is pending disability. So again, this gives us an idea of what's happening with those individuals. I put the, this was in there just to give you all a sense of where our point in time, what it has shown in the past. As you know, we did not do the point in time this year, as neither did the counties around us. And so, but again, this is one night. And it's that count in January. And we will be doing it again this coming January as we need to do it. It's a requirement for a grant. But I think what, we're also working on an app that we're going to have that it can have that real time of how many are we seeing in Carson City? And that is something that Summer will be working with as well. So we're trying to get that on board as well. I know when I talked with the mayor and Supervisor Shutey, we're more interested in what does it look like over a period of time instead of just one time during a January of each year. So we'll have more data down the road. So this is a diagram. I'm not going to go through and take you through each pathway, but what this is to show you is it's showing that path from homelessness to housing. So, and sometimes, as you can see by this, it can be very confusing of where the individuals going. There's individuals that become lost, you know, during the trajectory to being housed. So sometimes we don't know what has happened to individuals. And sometimes individuals, they can be in our stabilized section on the graph and then move backwards. So there's many different pathways that individuals take to getting housed. Sometimes they get housed and they decide that that's not for them. We've had that happen as well. So this was just to give you an idea of, you know, what, how individuals go from one step to another. It's complicated. It's complex. So this is, to me, this is complicated, confusing.
Nikki, your last comment about some people decide not to be housed and what would be your guess on that? Because that's kind of a common trope.
So my take on it is they have been homeless for so long that some of them, they don't feel comfortable in a four-wall situation.
But how many of the people that you house end up rejecting housing?
Oh, how many? It's hard to put that exact number to it. I mean, I can think of a couple of different situations.
So, a handful.
Again, it's-
Yeah, I just worry about that trope being propagated, that people don't want housing.
Some, it's not a lot.
Yeah.
But the reality that I want to point out is that that is some people's decisions and it does happen.
It's people's decisions to use and abuse and- One other comment that I would make about this whole issue is thankfully, we do have Eddie's House in Reno because we know that if we get kids off the street and get them on the right track, they're much less likely to lead a life of homelessness.
So, and I would just say with the, with the kids or families with kids, our collaboration with other agencies, even within our own agency, if that is the case, there, we find a solution to get them somewhere. And it happens quickly. So, you know, I was asked how many kids are actually living on the street? And, you know, when I had talked with Kristi about it, at the time, it's none because all of our agencies work quickly to get them somewhere. And again, it may be a motel room for a couple nights until we figure out other options.
Yeah, and my understanding is Eddie House is working, I don't know if it's 16 and above, 18 and above, but they're working with those young unhoused adults to prevent them from becoming chronically unhoused.
I just had, thank you for bringing up the, you know, not wanting to continue a misunderstanding of a situation, you know, of the two people not wanting. And it just, it brings me to what Grant Denton had said, because I sat through several of his presentations. And sometimes it's not having the skills to manage being housed. It's a different skill set. It's a different, it brings up different stressors. And often, folks experiencing homelessness or who have been homeless for quite some time, they know how to be homeless, but they don't know how to manage being housed and what that takes. And I had never thought of that because that just, it seems like it would be so much easier being housed. But it's easier if you know how to do that. So anyway, I just wanted to speak to that.
And I'll just input, go a little bit further on that. The individuals that we work with and put through our programs and get them housed, there's a lot of case management that goes along with that. We've got our life skills classes that, you know, they're needing to attend. We've got Kristi that works with individuals, you know, it's how to even read a lease. How, we've got our group living project that we have grant funds for, that we brought to the Board of Supervisors for approval. And it's even how to live with somebody else. And, you know, Kristi, if there's turmoil going on between these individuals, you know, Kristi's there helping work through that. And so there's a lot of time and effort that goes into the individuals and teaching them the skills so that they can stay housed.
So when is it that, so is it working? You know, in 22, we came up with the theories of the three stages and we began to put resources to those stages. And so while I recognize you can't solve for everyone, because they don't see the world the same way we see the world, but when I look at the raw number in the point in time count, I am joy to see it go from 68 to 39. And I know for a lot, they might look and say, what? You spent, I don't know, $100,000 to help 20 people? But it's probably still a lot less money. And there's other helps besides just getting them sheltered. So I really wanted to kind of go over that a little bit too with the public. So it's not just Karma Box. It's all the inputs, like you said. And I really think it fits our health and all that we do. Even here is a board that every policy is trying to drive together for it, just like Supervisor Giomi said, hey, are you working with the Parks Department, right? So it's all inputs, firing the cylinders. It's the most team. You know, it's everything coming together to provide the most appropriate service we can for our residents. And sad to say, one of the only things you can do is look at a point in time or hopefully this new data that Supervisor Shutey and I are excited to see from one of the task force we work on, to be able to see more data across an elongated period of time. So that, so that you don't jump to the conclusion that it was 20,000 a person or 10,000 a person because that's not a full and correct data either.
Well, and also you can't measure what, you can't measure the positive impact sometimes. You know, the, what we aren't paying because someone is on their feet. And so that's all a part of the discussion as well.
Reductions at the hospital. I mean, there's just, right, a ton of different things.
Shorter wait times even at the hospital.
Right.
And I'll give you one example of where I see all of us working together and where we've seen that positive impact is within our community coalition. And these are a group that got together quite a while ago and talking about, you know, what are those individuals that utilize the services at a high rate? And I haven't attended it for years, but when I first started attending, you know, we were looking at a page and a half of individuals. Well, that is down to two individuals.
That on our triage for the-
It's not the triage, not the housing triage. That's a separate one. It's the one that's been going on for quite a while.
That we do with the hospital?
These were, these were individuals that were hit in the emergency room. They were calling the fire department for services. And so that's where I see a huge impact. And no, you know-
It's not quick.
Oh, it's not quick.
And that's the hard part. We're not getting a quick fix. This is a long term.
This is not going to be a quick fix.
The thing is, this graph does not reflect the folks that were put on the path. This is only who got sheltered. Right? Because if you look at the next page, when you go down there, first you go to Street Outreach, then there's 49 individuals that were engaged. But then the next box says 10 of them of the 49 got into emergency sheltering, but that's not reflected on this page because this is permanent stuff. And then they go the other direction, 26 of them stayed on the street, but they're still in the pathway.
See, and this, basically, I wanted to bring this just to your attention to show you, I mean, it takes many different paths, many different layers. This, and this is 2024. Sometimes it takes many years. So-
The other thing that it kind of emphasizes, as you see some of the consistencies, is that the work that you have done and the board has done has not opened the floodgates because that's a comment we hear often, that doing any of this will open the floodgates and there'll be busloads of people showing up. And this doesn't bear that out. The evidence does not bear that out. And I think that's important to understand too, that, you know, was that one number, 40% had lived here for years? I mean, those are the ones we ought to be focusing the most on, those people who have been our residents for years who, you know, we need to get housed and productive for them and for the community.
Correct.
So, but I mean, I think that emphasizes that fact, you know?
And with Summer being out on the streets, she's meeting these individuals, she's talking with them and encouraging them to come in and, you know, let's work through what you need to get housed. And so-
You know, in my other job, we partner quite a bit with community outreach teams in the homeless quarter, Quarter of Hope in Las Vegas. And, you know, I think the number that they use is that there's 10 official contacts on average to get somebody to come in for help. 10 contacts. So if you multiply that by even 40 people, that's a lot of contacts. You've got your work cut out for you, Summer, and we appreciate it. But it takes a lot of contacts because a lot of these individuals haven't been guided or helped or provided with accurate information. And so it does take time for that trust to get built. And that you're there to improve their situation, not make it worse, not incarcerate them, not, you know. But that's critical because it can't be solved unless, unless we do that.
And the word success is a moving target. Or what is success? Is it just having the person off the street? Is that the success?
Today it may be, tomorrow it might not be.
I mean, I know one person that he literally spent a lifetime as homeless. And when he finally got help and got sheltered, he would not sleep in the bed. Wasn't comfortable, slept on the floor. Well, I wouldn't say we're 100% successful, but we were successful of some nature.
But that, but whose definition of success? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that was very successful.
Nikki, one of the things that's scary about this whole homelessness situation is that on the horizon is a lot of single elderly women are going to be finding themselves in this position.
Nikki, I have a question. Side issue, and Mayor, you're on the, work with FISH very, very closely. Do you ever compare your data with FISH to see if they line up or are generally in the same area? FISH serves a lot of our homeless people that are not going to come to your facility. And the second question is, how far out in town will you go to reach the homeless? We have an awful lot of the population, Stacy, that lives in the hillsides and causes us tremendous dangers. If you would address those two questions.
So as far as comparing our data with FISH, some of our, we don't really- So, as far as comparing our data with Fish, some of our, we don't really compare. Is it in addition? Because they may hit Fish, they may hit us. So, it's...
But you're not providing meals.
No.
Fish is.
Correct. So, they're, you know, we're not gathering that so-and-so came to us for this service and they went to Fish for this service. Sometime, we know that sometimes just from talking to the individuals, but are we comparing that data with them?
So, if we have unsheltered that are going to Fish, for example, for meals, but they're not coming to you, they're not included in these counts.
So, they're, they're not included in the data that we presented at the beginning. But in some of this other data, that is collaboration with all of our agencies, and does Fish, they, do they give us the info that's on those questions?
Christie Contreras for the record. So, with the questions where we were getting the forms just from the folks that were getting ARPA funding, it's now something that we have asked all of the agencies participating in the Housing Residence Committee and all of the agencies providing those homeless services to work on with us. Fish has started providing those, so moving forward, that data will include Fish. And then there is some overlapping, anybody who accesses the Fish shelters for their shelter enrollments, they use the same database that we do for our street outreach and our housing programs. So, that data is also including the data from those that are accessing Fish's shelters. For their dining room, unless they're coming in and Fish is filling out that, that one intake form, who, how many times and how frequently someone's accessing and stuff like that, we don't, we don't compare or share that data just for those overlapping programs and then those new homeless that they're encountering.
And then the data that Summer is collecting, they could be individuals that are accessing Fish as well. And then as far as some of the areas, there's certain areas that we have been told not to go to. You know, that can put a safety component into it.
Yeah, I think, you know...
Your folks are primarily focusing in on the urban sector of Carson City and not the outland rural areas.
I just want to make sure we're not missing those areas that either you are engaging, maybe with them, or, I mean, we shouldn't be, number one, we shouldn't be missing those areas entirely. And number two, I think, you know, some of the, you know, I get a frequent calls from residents in and around the old hospital, Mountain Fleishman area. I don't know if you're reaching that area. And it's not, okay, because it's not just, that was my comment about the parks, because there's a park up there, there's public properties up there, hospital's no longer public property. But, but it's not just businesses, it's also neighborhoods that we should be, you know, knocking on doors on.
Supervisor Shutey?
I'd like to get back a little bit to what Sheriff Furlong asked, though, in terms of the data and getting data from different providers, because I think, and first of all, I am not a data-for-data-sake person, you know, really, you want it to tell you something or to help guide. And I think it is very helpful to know approximately how many meals are being served, you know, how many people are going for food. And that number can stand in and of itself. And how many people are needing to use laundry? And how many people are going to HHSS? And, you know, how many go to Ron Wood Center? How many go to Salvation Army? Whatever it is, I think that would be really helpful because we could see where it overlaps. We can see also gaps. What are the gaps that aren't being met? Or where, where can we collaborate in a way that we currently aren't? Or where is there too much overlap? And we can step back a little bit and focus on something else.
Excellent point. And, you know, we're, we're new in getting the Housing Committee together, and you're part of that. And I think as we perfect some of that, I mean, I think some of, you know, that information is going to come out of that. And especially, we have a newly started, Mayor brought up a triage for the housing, and that's much like our community coalition that I talked about, that's been in existence for quite a while. And it's, it's looking at, you know, agencies are bringing forward individuals that have agreed that all the agencies can discuss the situation, how can we best help them? And, you know, so that's something to look forward to as well. And I think we can make some big progress for individuals in discussing that. And that is limited just to the agencies that have individuals that they're working with. And so, the individual signs a release of information so that their situation can be discussed. And it is limited to the agencies that have individuals that they want to discuss and talk with other agencies about.
Right. Thank you.
Supervisor Horton?
Data is really important, and I agree with Supervisor Shutey, you don't collect it just to collect it. But we've asked nonprofits for data. I recall last year, we said, hey, how about you provide us some data? That'd be great. Well, I'm sure they're working on that as we speak. I can feel it in my bones. And we'll get there. One of the questions I had is, will you help me find a job? I'm homeless because I don't have a job. How's that work? How do we do that? How does your agency do that?
So, we have a workforce program. We have a dynamic individual that is newly hired, Desmond Green, he goes by DJ, and he's helping individuals get a job. He's connecting with the businesses and talking with them and connecting individuals that come in to meet with him with a job. He, he just found that there's positions that individuals can get, but they needed their OSHA 10. And so, he went and talked to them. And there is a OSHA 10 class that's going to be down here in Carson City. And it's going to be right here at the community center. So, he can get individuals with their OSHA 10 instead of them having to go to Reno and stand outside and hopefully get into the class. So, so what kind of job do you want? We can find you one.
Supervisor Giomi?
You know, I think, you know, maybe kind of tying this together and wrapping things up, we, a while ago, had a Supreme Court ruling that changed potentially how we can address homelessness. And I know the DA's office is working on bringing that ordinance back. And I think, you know, as much as we've done investing time, materials, and people in helping to get people housed or get people to a spot where they're successful, however that's measured, we also have the other side of that, and people who don't want that assistance, you know, we kind of need to reach a point where I say, you know, then this community isn't for you. You need to find a different community because we're giving you, you know, we're opening resources, we're opening doors, we're trying to solve your issues. And if you don't take advantage of that, we're not going to continue to help. So, I think, you know, that, that is the full circle component for me, where it just isn't an endless, an endless way to assist them. There has to be some end to it, with passion or compassion, I should say, just so that, understanding that it takes, you know, 10, 11, 12 touches, that it may take a year. But, but as you said, there are people who don't, you know, who have taken advantage of that and don't want that. And then, you know, I really think we need to hit a point where we say, you know, thank you, but this is not the community where we want you, you know?
Absolutely. And that's also where Street Outreach comes in, because it is, maybe a business has said, okay, I've got individuals that, you know, they gather at my business and they're littering. And so, you know, Summer's gathering people to go pick up. And then she's having that conversation of, hey, you cannot be here.
Yeah.
You are bothering, you know, the business owner and that. And, and it's also her collaboration, even with some of the security around some of these buildings. Because we just, we had a meeting and got Summer in touch with one of the security guards for a location. And so, it's putting those two together. And it's, no, you can't, you can't be sleeping here. So, it's making that a little bit more uncomfortable.
Yeah. Well, and there are, what we've done is opened up alternatives. Instead of just saying, no, you can't sleep here, there are alternatives that Summer can say, but here's what you can do. So, it does ultimately give them choice, which, you know, every human wants. And, but that, but that's the bottom line. You have choices and you need to make a decision.
And even with the cleanups? Well, if you're going to be in Carson, then yeah, we're going to give you a gift card, but you need to help clean it up.
Are there any other comments or questions, discussion? Okay. So, that concludes item 20D. And now, we're open for public comment.
Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. Thank you, Nikki, and I'm pleased for you. And I look forward to getting to see you around town on occasion to say hi, but thank you for all your work. I'd like to bring up something, the mayor, if it's okay with the chair, about a young lady that spoke earlier, had written down her name, but I don't think I should respond with the name, the woman with the child with the crisis. I'd like to encourage everyone in healthcare or a parent to look at the documentary called Die, To Die For. And it was supported by WNC professor. Her own son had a Jekyll Hyde situation that had him suicidal, had him going up and down walls. And she kept thinking, well, what have I done wrong as a parent? And I'm paraphrasing her stuff, but this is what I got from it. And it turned out, it was in a response to synthetic dyes in food. And it, and all her psychological training never had that as a consideration. Diet in general was considered, but not specifically dyes. European, I think this documentary would have had a section on her, this young lady's child in it, or has at least dramatically portrayed and actual circumstances. So, I would encourage everybody to get into that really quick. As soon as you can hear it, you'll start then going, oh, my gosh, this could relate, this could be a factor. And then I'd also like to say, I would, can't wait to have an environmental health individual involved. I would have liked to have had more feedback about the emotional and mental connection with artificial surfaces and children. I went into that, but I didn't think any of you would even not just fall asleep on my findings. So, I would encourage you, basically, please watch that documentary. It takes a bit. I think you can see it on Amazon. If you can't, you can get ahold of WNC, I'm sure they can direct you. Just look it up, To Die For. And so, with a few seconds left, today's been quite a day, and I appreciate Dr. Lyons' involvement here. And I would like to encourage all of us to remember that indoor artificial turf needs to be vented. You need to have proper venting, otherwise it acts like a, what is it? I never can say it when I need to. The gases that come up under houses, can anybody, you probably know what I'm talking about, rayon, radon? And so, proper ventilation in indoor facilities, more crucial because you just don't have that out type ventilation. Thank you.
Any further public comment? None calling in? Okay. Just read on my business news feed that the fast food manufacturers are looking to take out a lot of the artificial dyes in their snack products. So, some good news. And with that, this concludes the Board of Health meeting. Thank you.